Gentlemen, welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is June 5th, 2023. At 7 o'clock, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence. Councilor Franz.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have a moment of silence. In the recent Memorial Day, I want to just remember those that gave their life as an ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms and for our country. Thank you.
Okay, before we begin with public comment, I have some things I'd like to share. Many years ago, before 9/11, I was at Logan Airport, sitting by a gate, when you used to be able to do that and wait for people to come in. And a plane was coming in from Washington DC. It's only myself and one other person in the terminal. And it was this guy who was a congressman, his name was Joe Kennedy. And I wanted to spend about an hour and a half with him. We had coffee, we talked. And it was around the time that his cousin, John, was starting a magazine. He talked about how their family was adjusting to media and how you have to be careful what you said and that he's a newspaper guy now, so we can't really talk about all the things we used to talk about. And it was really an interesting conversation about a family that's well-known in New England, and here you are, sitting there, listening to the integral pieces of their family. You know, when I was growing up, my father, who passed away 25 years ago, he dealt with a lot of the who's who of the greater New York area. And back in the days when you had a landline, they'd call the house. And people would call and they'd say, oh, this is Jack, or this is so-and-so. And we never knew who any of these people were. At one point, there was this guy Randy, he would call all the time. And then this one woman, Patty, would call. Turned out Patty was his daughter. Found out years later, when I was with my father and went and had dinner, that it was William Randall Hearst. And so we had dinner that night and everything. And I learned all about his father, who was the creator of the Hearst Corporation, created yellow journalism. And he talked all about how you had ways of being able to communicate and how you have to be careful not to cross lines. He says, and always be, ask for both sides of the dialogue. Went on from there, that I was having dinner back when 9X existed. Guy I went to high school with was the head of marketing for 9X. And he came and we're sitting at dinner, he says, well, the new name of the company's going to be Verizon. I looked at him, I said, Verizon? What does that mean? He says, doesn't matter what it means. He says, we're going to pay James Earl Jones $10 million, and he's going to say it 10 million times, and none of you are going to remember who 9X is. It's true. Same thing happens in politics and locally and everything. There's corruption, there's corruption, there's corruption. They're stealing from us, they're stealing from us. This happens in politics all the time. And if you say it over and over again, it's true. One of the original marketing tools, just keep saying it, it's got to be true, right? Chief Hart, our past police chief, used to say to me all the time, what a great place this is, what a hidden gem we have here in Londonderry. He says, you know, the main thing he would work on for the 20-plus years that he served this was is, how do we not screw this place up? You know, this is a great place. How do we keep it being a great place? Because a great place has great people. So who do I listen to about the history of Londonderry? People who built this community. During COVID, I went around the cemeteries and everything, walking around with my daughter. And you really read the history of Londonderry. Pillsbury, Clark, Adams, Mack, Merrill, Elwood, Hicks, Plummer, Gilchrist, Young, Pettingill. Reminded all this when I was just there for the memorial. More recently, Lincoln, Silvestro, Campo, Perkins, McGinnis, Tim Brown, Hale, McDermott, Nelson, McKinney, Van Grevenhoff, Conley, Rugg, Oswald, Vecchione, and Agnes, Greco, Dolan, Greenberg, Thibodeau, Packard, Lundgren, many others. I missed a lot of people, I'm sure, and I apologize to those families. My point is, is building a great community happens over generations and a lifetime. We represent 26,000-plus people of the community. As a community, we have a lot to be proud of. This is a great place, with many great people, who have do and have done great things. I am sure some of those outstanding leaders look at things today and shake their heads collectively, sometimes saying, what's going on here? You know, in addition to those I mentioned earlier, do you realize there were congressmen that used to live in Londonderry? Governors. Matthew Thornton, who signed the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, and that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." As we come up on the 4th of July, let's remember who we are. We're the greatest nation on earth. Constitution of the United States, we the people, we, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice to ensure domestic tranquility, provide for some defense, promote the general welfare, secure blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain or establish the Constitution of the United States of America. Not only is Londonderry a great place, the United States of America is a great place. Many of you may wonder, why do you do this? So I'm in my 24th year of service to the town. 24 years. You know, when I first came here, I never even knew, I didn't know Londonderry existed. I had no idea, over 30-plus years ago. You know, I came here to visit a friend. That same weekend, I met a young lady who I asked on a date, and went to a place called Promises to Keep. I married that young lady, and got married here at St. Jude's in this town. You know, you look back and you say, I talked about my dad, he died 25 years ago. I've been doing this 24 years. I joined the planning board because my father did it for 25 years, in the community that I grew up in. Because that's what you do. You do it in service to your community. What I also look at is, is that you do these things because other people sometimes ask you to do things. You do these things because you care deep in your heart about it. I never thought I'd run for office, ever. Tom Dolan and I had a conversation many years ago, when he was on the town council, and he said to me, come on, you got to come and run for office. I said, Tom, you're crazy, why would I do anything like that? Says, you know, I watch these things, I see what you guys do, why do you want to get involved in this stuff? And then Woodmont came. 600 acres and a billion dollars. Tom and I ran for office, because you had to get out front. We wrote a development agreement that stands today with that deed that protects this community and insulates every taxpayer in this community and is filed with the deed. That's because people got involved and did something. For me, it always comes back to the five things. We have a great police department, they're well-equipped and they're well-trained, and when you call them, they show up. We have an outstanding fire department, led by some outstanding leadership as well, who've been in place for over 10 years. They have all the equipment they need to save lives. Fire and police, you call them and they show up. Anybody drive around town and find any potholes in Londonderry? Go to other towns, their roads are terrible. Our Public Works Department stands up, they plow the roads, maintain the infrastructure, the sewer and everything else. And what else do we do? We make sure the largest community of 5,000 people a day are kept safe. And we protect that precious asset of those children. And you take out the trash. You do those things, you're running a great community, you're doing the right things. I look at this and I always say, it's a balancing test between maintaining a high level of services and generating revenue. It's not easy. People may think that generating revenue is not important, or it should happen just by itself, or things like that. We don't generate revenue in the commercial areas that we have, and insulate and protect the interior area like the master plan says. Your tax rate is $30, not $20. You know, I look at this and say, 24 years is a long time. Art Rugg and Bob Ramsey have done it for 40 years. There's people who really greatly care about this community. They run for office, they get elected, they sit up here and they do things. This is a great place. We do this because we deeply love and care about the community. I had no idea. Today, my wife said yes to a date that I'd raised my children here and call this my home. But this is my home, and this is our home, and this is all of your homes, and we need to protect it. So with that, I'll move over to the Historic Society to begin us off.
Where should I put this so everybody can see it? Should I put it far? Those things seem a little too flimsy. I'll put it up here for now, just so people can look at it and then I can move it someplace later.
That'd be great. And if you can just give us your name for the record, Cherston.
Hello, my name is Cherston Hildenin. I live at 17 Sutton Place, and I am the immediate past president and current secretary of the Londonderry Historical Society. And with me is Linda Green. Say your name and address.
My name is Linda Green, and my address is 22 Sugar Plum Lane, Londonderry.
And Linda is the current president of the Historical Society. And so we are here today to present the town with an enlarged copy of a document called the Schute Petition. The Schute Petition is dated March 26, 1718. It has 319 signatories. And those signatories were Presbyterians from Northern Ireland, the Scots-Irish. They wrote this petition, addressed to Massachusetts Governor Samuel Schute. And if you're wondering, for those of you who don't know, they were addressing the Massachusetts governor, because back then, the Massachusetts governor oversaw the colony of New Hampshire as well. And it was addressed to Samuel Schute, asking permission to come settle in his colony. And they expressed their sincere and hearty inclination to transport ourselves to that very excellent and renowned plantation. Plantation was another word that was often used for colony back in those days. So this document, the original of which lives in the New Hampshire Historical Society in Concord, was transported across the ocean by Reverend William Boyd, presented to Samuel Schute. But before he could make his decision, a group of people who had signed it showed up. They were a little eager to get out of Northern Ireland and come over to the colonies. They were unhappy with the political situation back home, and they didn't feel they had full exercise of their rights. So this first group of settlers, Samuel Schute considered what to do with them. There was a lot of them, he didn't really know who the Scots-Irish were. He basically sent them up to Casco Bay, Maine. And this group in Casco Bay, Maine, arrived there just in time for winter. Now, if you know, the winter is in Casco Bay, Maine is now, you can imagine what it was like in 1719, 1718. So the following spring, a group of 16 families left Casco Bay and made their way down to the Merrimack River. And they settled and formed the community of Nutfield in April 1719. And so those 16 original families, some of which are actually signatories on this, including Randall Alexander, James Gregg, James McKean, John Mitchell, James Neesmith, and Robert Weir. So this is one of the documents that led to the community of Londonderry being founded and placed in this location. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the Scots-Irish weren't the first people to live on this chunk of land. Indigenous groups such as the Penetook and the Abenaki lived here for millennia before the Europeans came. But this document in particular, it's at the roots of the community we live in today. And as such, it's a really important part of the continuum of Londonderry history. And that's a continuum to which we're still contributing now. So I do want to thank a couple people who made this possible. Ann Champa is going to come up a little bit later and explain a little bit more of the mechanics, but Ann had the idea to use the last bits of our remaining money from the 2019 300th Anniversary Celebration to get this document, to license it and enlarge it. I need to thank the New Hampshire Historical Society for their very affordable licensing procedure for nonprofits and municipalities. And I also want to thank Kevin Smith and Justin Campo, who really helped us along with this project, even as COVID was starting and it had to be buried for quite a while. So I'm going to turn this over to Linda, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about our organization.
I want to tell people about the Historical Society. It's really a hidden gem. Most people I meet say, I didn't even know this place was here. It has some beautiful historic buildings right at 140 Pillsbury. And it has Morrison House Museum, which was moved across town, taking down lines like 30 years ago to get on those foundations. It's a really beautiful building. The Parmenter Barn, which people, was one of the last barn-raising ever done in Connecticut. The Litchfield Carriage House, and also the Clark Blacksmith Shop, which was donated by our very own Reed Clark, who has just recently left for Florida. So everything was donated locally, and all our buildings display the rich history of early rural life. We have regular open houses, lectures, workshops, tours, Old Home Day events. Come on down on Old Home Day to the Historical Society, you'll see 17 craftspeople there, you know, showing early crafts that were available in Londonderry. Our barn is available to rent for weddings, reunions, parties, celebrations of life. Grounds are available, people come all the time to take their photos right there and have private events. And the society's a nonprofit that depends on the generosity of all our members, and we invite you to join our mission, become part of our family, to preserve our past and enrich our future, which is our mission. I have membership forms at the box table, and we really could use your help, and we thank you all very much for your attention.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager. And I hope you all enjoy having this here in Town Hall.
Any questions for the ladies? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open up public comment. I want to remind people that public comment is kept to a limit of five minutes, and this is enforced at the discretion of the chair.
Yes, Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. I just wanted to say, this is a thank you. Last Friday was National Donut Day, so naturally, I was leaving my house early in the morning to grab my donut. But to my surprise, at the base of my driveway, I found an abandoned car, which was unusual. So I called it in, not thinking too much of it, went and did my thing. I came back about 25 minutes later, and I found about five Londonderry police cars with their blue lights on. I found dogs walking up my driveway, policemen walking around the back of my house and everywhere. And I said, what's going on? And it turned out that was an abandoned car by a missing person in Massachusetts. And apparently, they knew that he was in the area sometime early, early that morning, but they didn't really know where until I called in this car. So I just want to say that for the next two or three hours, I had a couple of K-9 teams walking around my property very respectfully. I had a drone team that set up headquarters in the middle of my driveway, and I watched them fly the drone around, searching for this individual very professionally. They asked me if it was okay. I said, sure. They said, if you have to get out of the driveway, let us know. And I went out and did a couple things for an hour or so. I came back, and they were still there, and this time, they had choppers flying around low level on my house during a search. Very professional. The Londonderry Police did a phenomenal job, professional, polite. I can't say enough about them, of how great a police force we have there. I just happened to be the recipient of an abandoned car, called it in, but they came there and they did what they had to do without being very, very polite about it. And I'm so happy to say that they actually found the individual eight miles away, eventually later on that afternoon. But for the time that they spent there, using my house as the headquarters, so to speak, I can have nothing but good things to say about them. We do have a great police force, and I'm thanking them for what they did and how they did it. And anytime they need help, you know, I think we can rely on them all the time. So thank you for that. It was a very interesting morning, and I'm glad things worked out.
Thank you.
Ann Champa, another former president of the Historical Society. I just want to mention that we are having an Antiques Appraisal Day this Sunday at the Morrison House Museum, actually, in the Parmenter Barn. Everybody's welcome. The doors open at 12:30 for registering your beautiful historical items, curios, whatever you want to bring. Dan Afredi, an appraiser and antique dealer for years, this is the third time he's come to the museum for an Antiques Appraisal Day. So we're going to, as I said, open the doors at 12:30 for registering items, and it should run from 1 to 3 o'clock. Thank you. That's just one thing I wanted to say. Also, I just want to mention, I think we'd be remiss without thanking another person. During the 2019, when we were discussing at the deliberative session, the 2019 warrant, the town put in an Article Number 22 concerning the Nutfield 300th Anniversary Celebration. And it was a request for $25,000 from the town funds, I think it was on assigned fund balance. Well, at that time, former town councillor Deb Paul got up and requested that 5,000 of that 25,000 should go to the Historical Society's events for celebrating the Nutfield 300th on Old Home Day. And it was voted on, and that was passed. It didn't pass as a requirement, but it was end to recommend that 5,000 of the 25,000 goes to the Londonderry Historical Society. So we have to thank the townspeople for voting for that article. That's the way we got the money to have a wonderful celebration. I'm sure a lot of you were there in 2019, when we celebrated the 300th Anniversary of Nutfield, either at the Morrison House, or on the Common, or anybody, any day during that week when we were celebrating. But I just want to say, I can't thank Deb Paul enough for recommending that 5,000 go to the Historical Society, so we could bring in all the colonial reenactors and the different events, the people, the artists and the craftspeople into our property. And I believe we did have a pig roast that year also with Eric Turcot. We thank him so much for donating the pig and rendering it, and his services from Friday night to Saturday. We really appreciate it. But I want to just say that there were other people to thank, and I just want to mention them, okay? I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Farrell and Councilmembers, my name is Alan Haroyan. I'm from the Nevins Community. A lot of the Nevins community is here right now, they're to the back of the room. I just wanted...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could I have your exact address, please?
Yes, I live at 29 Morrison Drive.
Thank you, sir.
And in speaking for them, I just want to express our concerns for the building and maintenance of a fence regarding the 35 Gilchrist Road project by Macetti Corporation. We, all of us who bought into that area, were led to believe this would be conservation land forever and a day. And then it was kind of a shock for us to find out that this wasn't the case. It was, this conservation easement has been released. And so we do want to keep some semblance of conservation land between our homes and this development. And the reason I'm here is I just want to make sure there indeed would be a fence constructed and maintained by the builder. And even for the sound and the noise, for the sound and the light issues, bright headlights and things like that, that we could request that some plantings be put in, evergreens to kind of block that. So like I said, we do want to try and preserve some semblance of conservation land behind us, and that was the reason we all bought in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Burson, 3 Gary Drive. There's a lot of items on the agenda here, so I don't want to take any more time than necessary. But there was something on here. Is it okay to speak on what's on the agenda, Mr.?
Of course.
Okay. There is the Gilchrist Road property, which I have a question, and I'm not expecting you to answer it, but I'm a little confused as to who the owner of the property is. It was my belief that it was the Macetti Development Corporation, Gilchrist Realty Holdings. But there's a contract here that says that Reggie Rosario and Boston North own the property. That's a little confusing. I mean, this is from the assessor's office. I'd like to have a clarification on that. And also, apparently, there's a contract here that says it's been signed by the town manager. I brought up before that this should be a topic of discussion with the citizens of Londonderry. I don't believe that's taken place, it certainly hasn't been with me. And in regards to the folks from the Nevins, certainly they should have something to say. Also, on this property, there is a monitoring well, it's called FW 26D. I think we need to know what we're dealing with, because we're talking about the Tinkham Superfund site, whether it's the Nevins, or whether it's this property, or whatever. And there are, I think, over 30 monitoring wells on this property that we really need to know what we're dealing with. Also, I don't believe there is sewerage going down South Gilchrist if they're going to develop this property, which is another thing that the town is going to have to look at as to running sewerage down there. I believe there is water going down there, municipal water, but not sewerage. We've got a lot to deal with in this town. And before some of these things are moved forward, we need to have discussion with the citizenry and the general public. I think that would be appropriate. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. Folks, just to clear up some things with regards to Gilchrist. First of all, what's in front of us today is what was presented to the voters and approved by the voters. With regards to fence, plantings, all these are planning board items. There'll be an opportunity, if this project goes forward, for you to go to the planning board, work with the planning board, you'll have to work within our regulations. With regards to the ownership or anything along those lines, I do know who Mr. Ronzella is. Boston North was something from around 30 years ago. The EPA has been monitoring that entire area for almost 30 years. So these are all things that are well-known to the community and to the town. But this is a piece of property that was approved by the voters to move forward...
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself? You haven't gone up to the mic, I don't know who you are. Oh, I'm sorry.
So just for clarification purposes, this is something that has already been approved by the voters, just so that we're aware. Happy to continue to hear from everyone with regards to the site, but I wanted to make sure you knew all that information first. Thank you. Sir, sir. If you would like to come up and talk, sir, you're more than welcome to come on up. You identify yourself with your name and address, and we're happy to listen to you. Yes?
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I have been asking, since this was approved by the voters for, I think, 33 votes, I have been coming and asking that it be, that the fence blocking be part of the negotiations with Gilchrist LLC. fence blocking be part of the negotiations with Gilcrest LLC prior to it being accepted. So, I understand that it is a planning board issue, but if, if it's accepted without it sometimes, anyway. So, I, I've done some research because I've really been concerned because I know when I bought my property in 2008 and some people before me bought their properties, they were told at that time by, I'll call him Johnny K., who represented the Masetti Corporation and Gilcrest LLC, that our conservation land went all the way back, all the way back. And in looking at the original deed from 1120, nope, take it back, from 2003, with the, with the map on Book 114, 4150, page 127, the original agreement in 2003, that land, Lot 118, was part of the Nevens. It was included in the Nevens. And at that time, the agreement all said that nothing could be done to, and I don't have the legal terms, but nothing could be done to the site to change that without the agreement of all the landowners. Now, I do know that Masetti Corporation was the total landowner at that time. But when that map was changed, there were landowners there. There were people on Haley Drive that were, were living there that had bought properties. And the, the, the book and page specifically say each individual unit owner. So, I know that they were not put, they were not asked if they mind if Lot 118 was taken out. And I do not believe, and I ask that more research is done on this, when was Lot 118 taken out of the Nevens property? Who approved it being taken out of the Nevens property? So, I just asked before all of this is completed, that some of these questions can be clarified. Now, it's easy, Mr. Masetti came to a group of us that lived there at one time and told us that we needed to buy the three lots in the front of us. And he told us we needed to buy them and that they were conservation and commercial. And if we didn't, then, you know, they could put commercial property in there. Well, after doing some research at the town, I found that the Nevens already owned those properties. So, I'm asking that some more research be done on if it was done the way of the original document in 2003, if the Lot 118 was legally transferred out of the Nevens prior to making any agreement with the Gilcrest LLC. Thank you.
Hi. Name and address, please.
Maria Rizalroy, 14 Trolley Car Lane. A lot of my neighbors and I are wondering, there's no one, no one is telling us anything about the Foray project. What, our road is, is getting worse and worse with all the construction vehicles going back and forth. And I know the state is probably not going to take care of it because our, our street is not state property. So, who is going to fix it after all this?
Mike, we've had conversations with DOT about Trolley Car Lane. What's the latest?
We, we have. I mean, those, those conversations-
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there's been-
It's okay.
There's been dozens of conversations, so let me find out what the latest is.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, a lot of those conversations have focused on noise blasting, the sound barrier, and then as well as the, some of the takings that were, were happening down there that where the state was condemning certain properties for, for the interchange. I haven't heard a specific complaint that's come to my attention about the condition of the road, but I know that's something that Mr. Trattier would certainly be interested in ensuring that that road is not being torn up by DOT. And I can certainly ask him to look into it.
Could you contact the commissioner's office, tell them either the commissioner can come or the commissioner's representative can come and invite the people from Trolley Car Lane and tell them what's going on?
By all means.
And we want to find out, too.
Yeah.
It's a great question.
It's a mess. It's, I mean, we, it's, it's, it's noisier because we never got our wall that I was promised 12 years ago.
I agree.
So, we have to deal with the noise. We have to deal with the trucks. We have to, we have to deal with all of this. And there's, no one tells us anything. And there's no one in my neighborhood that appreciates any of this. It doesn't help any of us. And, I mean, I heard you talking fondly about Woodmont. Woodmont was much prettier-
Wasn't fondly, it was just something that happened.
Well, I mean, it was-
It was something that encouraged me to run because I wanted to protect the community. Ma'am, you're 100% right. Kelly, can you make sure we have this nice lady's contact information? Have Kirby contact her and so that her neighbors can be here and hear what DOT has to say and we'll hold them accountable.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
No, I'm glad you came down here and brought it to our, our attention because you shouldn't have to tolerate that.
Well, it looks like it's going to go on for quite some time and-
Well, let's get some answers for you.
I don't know. I mean, what kind of, in, on Trolley Car Lane, we're stuck in between the mess on Nut for 93 and the destruction of the apple orchard at Woodmont. I mean, I left Boston because I didn't want to be in the middle of all this anymore. And now it's, it's right here. And where do we go?
Well, let's see what we can do. I, I can't, I can't fix what happened yesterday, but let's see what we can do right now.
But Woodmont is just going to keep going. It's, it's just, it's ugly. It really is.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm very sad about what's going on in Londonderry.
Totally understand. Did everything we could to protect it. The, the, the people who owned it sold it. I mean, there's not a lot we could do about that.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for hearing me.
Absolutely. Let's see if we can get you some help.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and councilors. Good to see you all. I, I sat in your seat for over 20 years. And Mr. Town Manager, good to see you as well.
Mr. Dolan, could I have your name and address, please?
My name is Tom Dolan of 19 Isabella Drive. And I've been here many, many times, not very often on this side of the mic. I want to talk to you tonight about service to the community. As I mentioned, I've sat in your seats for over 20 years. My ser, but I'm not, I'm a state rep, but I'm not here representing the state or acting as a state rep. I, I want to talk to you about something that's been bothering me and it's close to my heart about serving the community. My service started when I was at West Point. I was giving service to my country. Then after I moved to Londonderry in 1986, the urge started again to serve. So, I joined the Rotary Club. I ran for elected office in both the town council and the Budget Committee. And while serving in those elected positions, I was always very careful, very careful about spending taxpayer funds. We always gave it very much thought. We had private meetings. We had arguments about it. And, but we always balanced our budget and we, and we usually gave money back to the taxpayers. We understood, when I was on the council, we understood quite well how the tax situation in New Hampshire is such that virtually all of our, our taxes are paid through property taxes. And it hurts, especially if you're, if you're an elderly person that's on a fixed income. We have to protect those, those neighbors of ours and make sure that whatever their bill is that they get, it's as small as it can be. Now, I'm saddened to see that town, the town government and the school district are spending tens of thousands of dollars on information requests under the RSA 91A provision, which is the right to know law in New Hampshire. I know you guys, as I did when I was sitting in your seats, bend over backwards to make sure that those requests are met. But most people don't realize, however, that, that those requests are first examined by high-priced lawyers to make sure that the request is legal. You can't share, for example, personnel files, things like that. And then I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Town Manager, that so far this season, the town has spent upwards of over $60,000 in meeting these requests. Is that-
So, that's the, that is what it would cost if I wasn't examining those requests personally in the first instance. Given my legal background, Representative Dolan, I have to devote a great deal of my time to doing this. But it's time away from my other duties, many other duties as town manager. And, you know, just at my hourly rate, as a, as a measure of the value of what's being requested through me, that number in the last year is something around $10,000. Could be a lot worse if, you know, we, we didn't have the situation where the town manager is an attorney. But that represents approximately 151 hours of my time taken away from my other duties as town manager.
Thank you. So, it, it's my contention that money spent on these types of requests, whether they're frivolous or whether they're serious or whatever, cost us and especially our taxpayers who have to foot these bills, a tremendous amount of money. I, we now lease our squad cars, but back in the days when we bought them, the cost of a squad car was, was something we used to wrestle over. And it, by my, my, my calculation, these costs are approaching what in the old days would be the cost of a squad car. And the squad cars are needed in police enforcement. So, my, my notion tonight is that if citizens want to serve their community, they should, they should volunteer to pick up brush in the town forest, pick up trash in the beautify Londonderry efforts that are successful in town, coach a team in youth sports. That's a great way to volunteer. Volunteer for a board. And we have lots of openings for, for boards in the community. But stop complaining and start smiling. We've got a great community. Reach out and help your neighbors. Pitch in and do your part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Name and address, please.
John, the Gilcrest Road, are we going to be able to comment on that when that comes up or is it?
So, it's Dan Bouchard.
Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive, Londonderry.
Thank you, Dan.
My question before I start off.
I understand. If you're going to comment about Gilcrest Road, it's probably best if you do it now. I'm probably going to, based on the people that are hearing anything, I'm probably going to try to have the town manager explain some of it afterward, you know, before we get there so that people don't have to stay for it. The item on the agenda tonight is something that the voters approved and it's something that the town manager's seeking consensus for to go to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So, it's, but if you want to talk about it now, now would be appropriate.
Okay. So, bear with me here.
All right.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the council members for the time they put into the community. All right? I know it's tough. It's not easy being up there. In 1979, when I was interviewed by Chief Ball, Captain Webster and Selectman Welch, which probably none of you know, for a position with the Police Department, I was asked, "How long would you plan on staying in Londonderry?" My response was, "Well, my fiancee is going to school at St. Anselm College and has two more years. After that, I'll reevaluate and see how I like Londonderry." That was in 1979. Forty-four years later, I'm still here because I love this community and I care about the community. I come up here and question and ask things of the council because I get frustrated not getting answers. So, I've been busy and unable to attend the last several meetings, but the last time I was here, I brought up the fact that issues are brought up and sometimes these issues are never addressed. One was the solar panel at the North Fire Station. When I originally asked the town to explore solar panels for the public buildings because North Fire had them, and if it was possible to find out how much of a savings the town was getting, at that time, I was told they were not working. At the last meeting, I was told, "No, they are working." When I brought that up, it was stated that they were working when I originally brought it up. The town manager, I was looking at him and with his lips said, "That's not true." Not vocally, but with his lips. And I was looking at him. So, I left here and I said, "I'm going to research this and I'm going to come back and find out." Well, I would suggest that he go back and review the tape and see for himself that it was stated that the solar panels at North Station were not working. I brought up the issue about the foam being used on the fire department again. And I have been asked, I've been asking this and addressing this for over a year and a half. Okay, this is a serious issue. I hear people from the public and the council voice their concern about the water quality in town. This is something that can be prevented by taking this foam out of the trucks. We know it's, if it's used, it's going to affect our groundwater. All right? And I heard from the chief a few meetings ago that he was, you know, waiting to hear on a cost for removing the foam from the trucks. Regardless of the cost, for some reason, this foam gets used, the contamination of the groundwater. And it's going to cost the taxpayers much more money than to try to get rid of that foam. All right? For example, the cost of the property that could be contaminated, the wells that could be contaminated. I don't believe the town's insurance company, we all, if you've ever dealt with insurance companies, would be willing to pay damages if they knew the town was aware of the problem and the town did nothing to eliminate the risk. All right? The insurance companies can find a loophole. All right? And who's going to be on the hook? We, the taxpayer, where all of a sudden you're going to come up and say, "It's going to cost us X amount of dollars," you know, a million dollars to clean up this, this issue. I don't see why we can't just address this foam issue and get rid of it. I stated that I believe the town manager had stated the Police and Fire Department were reorganized at his State of the Town. I stand corrected. It was the Police Department that was reorganized under the previous chief. All right? Not the Fire Department. So, I made a wrong statement. I'm correcting it. All right? At a meeting, I asked why we hadn't added captain at the Police Department. I was told then that it was because he was going to be doing prosecutorial work. Okay? The council has stated in the past, if you have an issue and you can bring up suggestions or solutions, they would entertain it. It all sounds good, but the wheels either turn very slow or suggestions or solutions are brushed aside. All right? Last July, I reached out to the town manager to inquire about my check that had not been cashed for the property taxes. I never got a response back. So, I came to the council to inquire about it. After being told that there were two boxes of checks that were not processed, I made a recommendation at the time, perhaps resources to staffing needing to be real, reallocated during this time to help move the process. What the town manager later brought to the council was a bunch of statistics. Okay? This is how long, how many we have. This is how fast we can open them. All right? Et cetera. That's not what I was looking for. How much money was spent, all right, by Justin and everybody else to look into this. All right? So, I can understand sometimes when people are coming in here and requesting a 91A and, because they're not getting responses. All right? The town, I have to disagree when I hear the town council on the Gandy issue, it's not a council issue. I'm sorry, gentlemen. All right? The town employees are your issue.
All right. So, Dan, you got to wrap it up.
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm going as fast as I can here.
I understand.
Okay.
But, you know, but I have to be respectful of the, of the time on it. So-
Okay.
You're, you're over already, so please try to wrap it up.
Okay. So, I asked that, you know, the town manager works for the taxpayers of Londonderry and answers through the actions through the town council. Therefore, it becomes a council issue. When the town manager has stated that the no trespass issue on Chris and Laura Gandia was not a council issue, he made the decision. I understand the town manager lifted the trespass order, but only after the town faced a legal challenge and would have lost it if lifted. Again, this is a council issue. The town manager's actions were totally wrong from what I observed- The Town Manager's actions were totally wrong from what I observed. Twenty-eight years as a police officer, all right? If I had no trespass order on someone and I knew I had a strong case, I would not lift it. All right? How much money is being spent on this? All right? On the Gilchrist issue, can I address that later?
Dan, we're way over. If you want to come back later, that's fine.
I'll address it later.
I'm probably, you know, we're only going to do a consensus of the agreement that was presented to the voters. So, I'll see if anybody else has public comment. I'll make the exception if you want to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I understand the frustration that the council may have at times, but thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, address a couple of those points?
Sure.
I, Mr. Bouchard has it exactly right. I was mouthing, "That's not true." But I wasn't stating that it wasn't previously stated that the solar panels weren't working. I stated it wasn't true that they weren't working. So, just a point of clarification on that. On the foam issue, Mr. Chairman, point taken that the wheels of government sometimes roll more slowly than people would like. But I can tell you that the last time I saw the Fire Chief, I believe, he provided me an update on this. I'm sure he'd be happy to provide an update to Mr. Bouchard.
Okay.
As far as the suggestion that, you know, citizens' process improvement suggestions, citizens' feedback are not implemented, that those items are sort of just forgotten about or brushed aside, I'd like to point to a couple of examples where that's not the case. And one of them, I think it was my first interaction with Mr. Bouchard, at least one of my earlier interactions with him, when he expressed concerns about a tanker spill that had taken place in the north part of town and requested information. And as I recall, I produced volumes of information to Mr. Bouchard on that particular tanker spill. Some of the other things that we've done as a town government, important improvements that either are targeted at improving transparency, improving responsiveness, other measures that have improved how we do what we do, these came as suggestions from residents and taxpayers. Some of those examples, recording in the minutes how each councillor votes, forming a pickleball task force. That's something that came from the community. Focusing on why we have been-
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. We are in public comment. Point of orders are only for something that is a rules violation. All right? There is no reason to have a point of order right now because there is no rules violation. Sir, once again, there is no point of order. There is no rules violation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Focusing on why we were covering certain operational expenses with open positions, unfilled positions at the Police Department. Actually, that was something that Mr. Bouchard, I believe, has focused on correctly. It is my opinion for years. We began to address that with the budget that I proposed to the Town Council, that the Town Council adopted and that the citizens approved. The Lions Hall lease, correcting some of the issues with how carrying costs were apportioned between the town and the Lions Hall. That was something that was raised by a member of the community. Instead of doubling down on issues in that regard, the Finance Director and I ensured that our house was in order going forward and the council ultimately agreed with that advice. Theming Old Home Day this past season as a birthday party for the town. That was Councillor Deb Paul's idea and it is something that I took and we ran with. A warrant article focusing on water and gauging the community's support for water infrastructure improvements. That's something that came from the community. Recording more of our meetings so that folks who are mobility impaired or would prefer to watch them from home, that's something that came directly from the community and has improved in the last year or two. Correcting issues with the website, such as the Notify Me tab, so that people are notified when changes are made to the website. Putting the rules for public comment on the website. That's a request that was made to me recently by Mr. Douglas. I did it within days. Linking to the videos of our board and committee meetings on the front page of the website so that people don't need to go fishing for it. I believe that is something that Councillor Paul raised with me and that we immediately implemented. And lastly, as an example, Mr. Chairman, placing all of the town legal notices in one place on the town website for the convenience of the public. I suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that if we're interested in brushing off and ignoring the comments and input that the public bring to us, we're doing a pretty bad job with that.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, coming back to public comment. Is there anything further from the community?
Ray Burson, 3 Gary Drive. Look, a lot has been said here and sometimes we find ourselves, particularly on the Town Council, trying to stand up for yourself, which you should. But we can always make improvements. There have been improvements made, which the Town Manager has just mentioned, but we can always do better. Now, in regards to not addressing things, personally, I have brought a lot of things forward and that have not been addressed. With all due respect, when people are busy, they don't have time to get back to me. I understand that. I've written things and personally handed it to Town Councillors, asked them to at least take a look at it and maybe respond. I did not get anything back. I've had meetings with the former Town Manager and asked for response back. Now, I don't want to say I've never got response back because I have, but we can always do better. Look, it has been said and that perhaps the Town Council isn't doing the proper job. And we shouldn't throw stones at others. We can all do better. But the communication, we can roughly improve on, okay? Look, 91As don't need to be made out. The only reason people make out 91As is they're not getting response back. Okay? That is happening, whether we want to believe it or not. Okay? Who the heck wants to make out a 91A? All we want to do is understand what's going on. We're the taxpayers. We're paying, with all due respect, we're not paying for you guys because you chose to step up, which we should appreciate. But you are attempting to do the best job you can for the citizens. We need to listen to the citizens, respect the citizens for what they got to say, and try to respond the best you can. And I know, everybody's trying to do a good job, but we can always do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Douglas, 6 Overlook Ave. I'm not really a big fan of 91As. I don't- Glenn Douglas, 6 Overlook Ave. I'm not really a fan of 91As. I haven't really filed a whole lot of them. I think there was one with the town when Smith was running for Senate. But the last council meeting, I was called out after public comment. Specifically, a number of documents were read. I emailed the Town Council two days after that meeting on Thursday and said, "I'd like a copy of all of the documents that were read." And I listed them that Mr. Butler read. I also asked for the petition that Deb Paul filed against the town for a single document. The Town Council did not acknowledge that email at all. Mr. Malaguti, it bounced back, that was Thursday, it bounced back and it said, you know, "Auto respond to him out of town. You know, contact the Assistant Manager if you need to." It's like, no big deal. Don't need to bother someone else. He'll get to it. It wasn't to him anyway. It was just a CC. He responded to me at nine o'clock on Sunday night and said, "Thank you for your email. I just got back. I'll get you what you need or what I have." And he did. Five days later, he responded at six o'clock on a Friday night. Kudos to him. He got the information. However, I'm still waiting for the information that I asked for almost three weeks ago. So, my only option is to file a 91A. These are documents that called me out by name as some sort of group, the Londonderry Times by name, several other citizens by name, and you won't give me the information. So, it's a 91A. I have heard from multiple people that people have asked simple questions and they get blown off and they don't get answers. So, if we're going to make a big deal about how much these 91As cost, maybe you could respond, acknowledge it, and give us the information that, as I said, I was called out by name. I couldn't say anything because after the public comment closed, and I'm not even allowed to see those documents. You can smirk. Go ahead. Smirk.
Hey, hey, hey. No back and forth. No back and forth.
We can't have back and forth, but we can be attacked after non-public.
Mr. Douglas, you're not going to look at him and say smirk and engage him. You speak to the Chair and you only address the Chair. Those are the rules.
I want the documents.
Okay.
When will I get them?
When he releases them. They're his documents. I don't have them. He says he's going to release them. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Peter Kimpton, 89 Fieldstone Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I got an interesting message after my previous public comment. Particularly interesting because it was a message of support from somebody I don't normally agree with. And I think it's because we both find ourselves feeling the pain of New Hampshire's energy policies, which have made us one of the most expensive places in the United States for power. And while we're hopeful for relief from this Twin States project, I think we're all justifiably concerned it could also have the opposite effect. I'd also like to make something clear. I'm neither opposed nor in favor of the project at this time. I'm genuinely looking forward to more details about this tonight. But I am calling for caution. Because as myself and a fellow resident commented at the last meeting, some pretty powerful business and political forces are often aligned around projects like this. In reply to a public invitation before this council, I did look into other politicians who take campaign donations from utility companies. On the New Hampshire Secretary of State website, I found that the leader of the New Hampshire House Committee on Science, Technology, and Energy, Chairman Michael Vose, took over $1,000 in donations from EverSource and TransCanada last year, triple what they gave him in 2020. And it was four times more than they gave the Vice Chair of that committee, which is our own Representative Thomas. And I honestly didn't find this information very comforting, as apparently was intended. I'm also urging caution because once these sorts of endeavors get underway, there's virtually no stopping them. When the Northern Pass project fell apart, those power lines from Canada to Massachusetts were routed through Maine instead. Work began at the start of 2021 and Maine citizens rushed to get a statewide ballot initiative in place for the election. In November, Maine citizens voted 59% to 41% to cancel the project. But the work had already begun. The ballot result was tossed by the State Supreme Court and the project continues forward today, even though the majority of Maine is against it. Another concern is that we need to set our expectations appropriately. Central Maine Power originally estimated their project would create 3,500 jobs. But a little over a year later, that number dropped to 1,600. A substation in Pottle, Maine, was planned. Projected tax revenue to the town was 1.4 million. But last month, that substation was canceled because it wasn't determined completely necessary. These are not anecdotal examples. We saw similar things here in New Hampshire. Northern Pass was estimated to create 1,300 to 1,600 jobs over the course of three years. But a subsequent study by an independent New Hampshire research company determined a more realistic figure was one-third of that number. The independent study also revealed that New Hampshire doesn't have enough of the specialized labor needed to support the project as it was outlined. So, many of those jobs were actually going to go to workers who would be brought in from out of state. And going back to my point earlier about how difficult it is to stop a project once it starts, we need to be aware of SB 54, which that Energy Committee recommended ought to pass last month. And that is a proposed state law which would raise the maximum contract length with a regulated utility from six months to up to 20 years. If a utility project yields a negative result for Londonderry residents, it could be something we'll be forced to live with for decades. The consequences could be huge. So, as we hear the presentation this night, or tonight, I'd encourage you to keep these recent lessons and comparable projects in mind. The figures need to be treated with caution. The potential conflicts of interests need to be weighed. And there is a huge difference between a projection and a firm commitment. So, as this council looks out for the citizen interests this evening, I urge you to remember what, I never thought I'd be quoting Ronald Reagan. But I urge you to remember what he used to say. Trust, but verify. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray, you've been up twice already. Let's- All right? Anything else? Seeing nothing else. Public comment is closed.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
With regards to Mr. Douglas requests, on May 18th, Mr. Douglas sent to the Town Council and CC Mr. Malaguti. Absolutely. And in that request, I'm requesting a copy of all documents Councillor Butler referenced shortly after the public comment was closed. All documents. I'm also requesting public documents referenced by Chairman Farrell at the end of the meeting in regard to the court filing of Deb Paul. On Friday, 5/26, Mr. Malaguti responded to Mr. Douglas and said, "Having watched the recording of the meeting, I am attaching the documents which I have access that are responsive to your request. We are in the process of gathering the other documents referenced in this meeting and will supplement the town's response next week." So, when someone says that he asked for a request and we did respond back. Now, the balance of that request rests on my shoulders. And let everyone understand that Mr. Douglas didn't request 91A, but he requested the documents. On April 24th, Councillor Dunn made a motion to appoint Deb Paul as an alternate on the Utility Committee. Council members weren't sure if there was an opening, and I was one that wasn't sure. The decision was to check, to- The decision was to check, to see if we actually had an opening, and bring it up at the next meeting. Town Counselor Dunn withdrew that nomination. The May 15th meeting, which Mr. Douglas is referencing, I believe, we found that, yes, there was an alternate opening to the Utility Committee. Counselor Dunn motioned to appoint Deb Paul as the alternate. The motion died. The motion died without a second. And one of the counselors had indicated that we should post the opening. On May 18, I received a request from Mr. Douglas for all the documents from me after the public comment was closed. May 28, the manager responded with some of the documents, but not all. The town did not have all the documents because they were not used or read in the public. The balance of the documents that Mr. Douglas requested remain in my possession. Let me make it perfectly clear. Why did I have these documents and why I did not read them? Why I had them and why I did not read them. At the 15th, Town Counselor Ron Dunn made the motion to appoint Deb Paul to the Utility Commission. The motion died because there was not a second. If there was a second, I was going to use the documents I had to assist in my reasoning for not voting in favor of Deb Paul. Based on the information I had and historical data, I believe it was a prudent business decision not to vote to place Deb Paul on the Utilities Committee. Some of the information I had, I felt that a lot of citizens of London were not aware of all these public documents. And let me speak briefly of the documents that I had that night. And once again, once again, I didn't share those documents because Deb Paul's second... There was no motion on the floor to put Deb on the Utilities Commission. So these are my documents. He's requested all my documents that I talked about concerning why I made a... Why I would have made a prudent decision, business decision, not to put her on the committee. And these are documents, and I will certainly give them to the town manager, and he certainly can pass them off to Mr. Douglas, and maybe he'll publish them in his underground email or whatever that is. October 22nd, 2010, a Superior Court judge ordered the owners of Nutfield Publishing to vacate their property at 2 Litchfield Road by December 1st. He also ordered Deb and Chris Paul to pay the town's legal fees. Rockingham Superior Court Judge Kenneth McHugh ruled Monday that the publishers of the three weekly newspapers finally had to leave the property that they had been working out of for four years without a certificate of occupancy. So the town tried to get a certificate of occupancy from them. For four years, they worked in their property without a certificate of occupancy, and the town had to take Nutfield Publishing to Superior Court. They operated from two extensions to try to bring the building up to code. The Pauls appealed that decision and filed a lawsuit, a lawsuit against the town. The town ordered the Pauls to vacate the property on August 10th. That deadline came and went with no action. The Pauls did not respond to requests for comment Thursday. Their attorney's listed phone number was out of service. Judge McHugh didn't mince words in his ruling. He said the lawsuit had no merit, fact, or in law, and that the planning board was being used or strung along by the Pauls for seven years. Now, I could go on and read it, but the bottom line is, the Pauls didn't show up to that court hearing. And Judge McHugh found in favor of the town. So here's a little history, and there may be some people that are new to this town and never knew this existed. But the town had to go to court. Another, and this is all black and white, all black and white, I'm not making it up. November 2016, Nutfield Publishing owes $163,000 to the IRS. A levy notice was put into the town, and the town had a very small balance with Nutfield, and we paid off. Here's that. Now, and this doesn't have to do with sour grapes. These are the facts, and this is what we've dealt with, or I've dealt with, for years. And I'm not... Please understand, I'm not going to give these documents out to someone without publicly explaining these documents because I want to control the narrative. They can control the narrative. That's the reason why I didn't get these documents. If they want the documents, they're going to hear what I have to say, and the people of London, they have a right to hear it too. Because I could give these documents off, they read them, and guess what? Nothing happens. Doesn't get printed, no one comments on anything, and none of you know why I made the decision that I would have made. And remember, I didn't bring these documents up, I didn't read them, I didn't have to because she didn't get a second on the nomination. Now, we have an email from a previous employee, and I'm going to go by briefly because I don't want to waste too much time. But this gentleman's name is on there. It's John Sedenberg. He worked for the Londonderry Times. And he indicates that she's under control, she's undercounted the number of stories I've had in the paper to pay me less. Almost more appalling is that she has put my byline on someone else's story and then also put someone else's name on my story. She did what... She did that with the story I wrote on the PUC meeting about the water increase issue in Hampstead. Anyone who was on that meeting would know I covered it because I was asked to introduce and identify myself in the beginning. Members of the Hampstead Water Committee and Selectman Lejean was also at the meeting. I find it demoralizing and degrading to have an association even from a distance with her, but I've decided to give notice in June. It goes on. "You are quite right. She does have an enormous conflict, and her offer to have anyone write letters to the editor is highly the same as her platform in having the paper." Mr. Douglas. May 19th, heads up. John, this was from John Sedenberg to John Farrell. "You may be looking for this anyway, but just wanted to suggest seeing what kind of coverage appears in the 5/27 Londonderry Times this week's meeting." She has already advised, she has already advised the writers not to include anything but her... Not to include anything about her in the stories written about that meeting. Controlling the narrative. I could certainly go on, and Mr. Douglas will get them all. This is about an article that he read. Understandably, he saw my name on the story and I thought I had written it. This was to the previous town manager. What happened? Yeah? Go ahead.
There is no point of order. There is no rules violation.
Yes, there is.
No, there's not. There is no rules violation.
The right of order needs to be heard.
There is no rules violation.
Yes, there is.
State your rule violation.
The rule violation is he's putting out information, trashing someone, which is not what Mr. Douglas asked for. He asked for the information that was put out publicly prior to Deb being the nomination for Deb. That's what he asked for. He didn't ask for... This is just typically...
Point of order, rule out of order. No rules violation.
Oh, hold on, man.
Excuse me. You want to speak again, you can go outside. Do not interrupt this meeting again.
Don't talk to me like that.
Do not speak again, or you can go outside.
This is a public meeting.
Again, you are out of order. You are out of order.
You're right.
You are out of order. You are out of order. You can step outside. Officer, you are out of order.
Are you serious? Are you serious?
All right, you are out of order. If you're not going to remain quiet and let him finish, you can step outside.
And once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And once again, the reason why I had these that night and Mr. Douglas asked for what I had mentioned is because this is the type of material that I was making my decision and a prudent business decision not to put her on a committee. I think some of the people in town, if they knew some of this history and understood that there was legal proceedings, legal... Two types of legal proceedings. One, which has to do with the Attorney General's office, and the other one has to do with the board. And the chair and vice chairman was at Superior Court at this hearing last week. So...
All right. I'm not going to warn again. If you want to talk, go outside. Otherwise, we rule this disturbing the peace. Please stop.
So, and I certainly will turn these all over. Attorney General's Election Law Unit announced Londonderry's arrest. Is that news? I think it is. Deb Paul got arrested. She went up to Conken, stayed out of the limelight in Londonderry, and there wouldn't be a police law. She was warned twice. She was given letters twice from the Attorney General's office, which is... Which was the unit of election law unit, who deals with election laws. Let's blow it off. Now, just in case some people think that, you know, I'm unreasonable and this isn't right, so on and so forth, I also have some letters that I will give... Well, I'll give them to you and no one's asked for them, yeah? This was dated 4/26. Came into the town email and said, "Mr. Butler, thank you for standing up to that group of miserable rabble-rousers that show up at almost every meeting to complain about trivial matters. I watch most meetings and find them ridiculous and childish. Thank you for not apologizing when no apology is due. Keep up the good work. I will vote for you again." Here's another one that came in to the town council group mail. I think it was the group mail. It says, "Town Council, I just wanted to take a brief minute to let you know that you are seen, heard, and appreciated. I can't imagine it being easy to navigate business in such a polarizing times, but surprisingly find peace in the fact that what Londonderry is experiencing is not restricted to our beautiful town, rather is something we see on more of a national scale due to the extreme views and beliefs coming from all angles. It may seem odd to find peace in something like this, but I'm a lifelong resident of this amazing town and would be beyond disheartened if the withdrawal we observed from a very small group of people, despite what they may think, was isolated to our community. Hope remains my core that just as fast as this wave of harassment arose, it will eventually dissipate. Please remember that the numbers of people who do support you far outweigh those on the contrary. We may not be as loud or as persistent, but we are here and appreciate you. Keep up your good work." And this came into the town council organization mailbox. It says, "Hi, Council, I want to take a quick moment to say thank you. Some of you know me. My family moved to Londonderry in 1985. My brother and I graduated from Londonderry High School, and our parents did a lot for this town. My in-laws moved to Londonderry in 1980 and still to this day live in the town. And my father-in-law is on the recycling committee. I went to kindergarten with Mr. Butler's..." I blanked it out.
All right. I've asked multiple times for you to stop speaking. I'm asking you, I can hear you up here. Can you please stop speaking? I've asked you multiple times. Let him finish while everyone else gets to speak, and we let them finish.
And I both married people from Londonderry. My husband and I moved back and built a house here to raise our children in the town we love. These are just examples of how deeply rooted my family is in this town. My thank you in this email is for the thankless jobs you have, for the endless ridicule and public scrutiny you have endured." I blanked that out because that mentions someone's name. I'm also...
Sir, last warning. Next person, we're going to ask people to leave.
If you let me finish, you may know why. If you let me finish, you may know why. Thank you. My best friends were the school board member.
Sir, 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 you're out of order.
No, he's out of order.
Sir, you can leave, sir.
No kidding. Thank you.
I'm very much...
Why don't you let me... Why don't you say thank you for my service? I don't mind.
I very much understand how much this constant badgering wears on someone. Mr. Butler, thank you for calling out the citizens auditor, or whatever ridiculous self-appointed title Mr. Esposito has given himself. Thank you for shedding light on the emails, constant 91As, and absolute insanity that surrounds this person and his following of people. I stand with you in saying they are not a representation of the Republican Party or overall appearance in this town in any way, shape, or form. I have been on the receiving end of his condescending tone and wild language and thoughts. He has blocked me on any form of social media as he did not like what I had to say. And let me be sure to say, this is even larger group in town who believes this group, Mr. E. and Company, is detrimental to our town. This needs to be stopped. So thank you for keeping our roots strong, and know there are many people who support you and feel strongly that Mr. Esposito and his following are loose cannons. You are more than welcome to read my... And someone asked about this. You are more than welcome to read my email aloud at any point. Just please remove my name, as truly people in his circle scare many of us. So with that being said, and like I said, this wasn't read because second was dropped, but because it was asked, I'm going to give them the copies. But now the people of Londonderry know why I would not vote. It would be a prudent business decision not to vote if we had to vote. And this is the reason why I had it, so that we could discuss it. But it never came up. Since Mr. Douglas asked for all these documents, and the documents, I'd be more than happy to give them. And I anguished over the fact whether or not I was going to give these to you, but you know something? I have so many people complain about, "We're not transparent. You're hiding stuff. You're doing this and that." I'm not hiding anything anymore. And if you want something, I'll give it to you, but it's going to be read in public. That way, you can't control the negative narrative. And by the way, feel free to put this in the local newspaper and feel free to put it on your...
Appreciate it. Send them, Dave.
Good. Soup. Mr. Chairman, there were the copies.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. So, moving on to new business, just prior to I give the new business, councilors, I have a license agreement here that needs to be signed by all of you. So please stop by the town hall during this week. It has to be witnessed by a note... Um, so please stop by the town hall during this week. It has to be, um, has to be witnessed by a notary. So make sure you stop by and make sure you have a notary witness or signature. Uh, new business, Twin State Clean Energy Presentation. Who will be presenting? Gentlemen, name and address for the public, and, um, please proceed.
Hello, Council. My name's Terron Hill. I'm a project director for Twin States Clean Energy and live in Boston.
Welcome.
Uh, my name's Sean Downey. I'm a representative of National Grid, uh, with a firm called Hilltop Public Solutions.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Well, first of all, thank you, um, to the council and to town manager for having us in tonight. I think I'll start by introducing the team that's with us tonight. Terron Hill, to my right, is the Project Development Director for the Twin States Clean Energy Link Project. And then with me here, I'll just introduce them for, uh, the sake of time. Jessica Farrell, uh, overhead transmission engineering. Corey Schutzman, lead environmental scientist. And Matt Spofford, substation engineering for National Grid.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Terron to kick us off.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Well, we're very thankful for the council's time tonight, um, to talk about the Twin States Clean Energy Link. We're very early in the, in the proposal, um, but we're here because we really want to get input and to understand how we can really deliver a good project for New Hampshire and the communities. It's been commented earlier, um, this evening that energy bills are high. Part of the reason why energy bills are high is because New England is highly dependent on natural gas. That chart up there shows that we get almost half of our energy from natural gas. And natural gas is something that we don't produce here in New England. And so we get our natural gas at the end of the pipeline. What I don't think many people know is that we actually get a lot of our natural gas, especially during the winter months, from other countries. Natural gas that is shipped here through what we call liquefied natural gas. And because of that, the price of electricity does fluctuate. This past winter, we had some of the highest electric bills here in New Eng, New England, as well as in New Hampshire that we've ever had. And that's because that price of natural gas is based on global commodity prices. So what happens in the rest of the world affects us here in New England. Part of the way that we can move forward is to lessen our dependency on natural gas. And that really means that we need to change our, our energy supply mix and bring in more resources in order to really move forward more energy that is made here in New England. And so the proposal going forward is to build more offshore wind, and New Hampshire is looking at offshore wind, to build renewable resources here in New England, places like the Coop Loop, such that we can produce more wind and solar here in New England. But when you think about it...
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Offshore wind in our 19 miles of shoreline?
The New Hampshire legislature is looking at offshore wind leases in the Gulf of Maine.
I'm just, just, just curious. We're not much of a shore, that's why I asked. Okay, thank you.
But you do have access to those waters.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, and it's a great question, because offshore wind is going to make up a, a significant amount of, um, electricity production going forward. When you think about all of New England, including New Hampshire, they're looking at something like 10 gigawatts of offshore wind. And when you think about it, at the end of the day, if the wind's not blowing, or the sun's not shining, I don't know about you guys, but I would think that you want your lights to come on, even if the wind's not blowing, the sun's not shining. So how do we do that? Well, our proposal is to bring in more hydro resources from Quebec. In order to do that, we need to build transmission. We don't have enough transmission, um, into, um, New England. There's a need to invest in infrastructure. There's a need to replace a lot of the infrastructure that's already existing. National Grid is a utility here in New England. We operate roughly 200 miles of transmission assets through the Granite State, as well as a number of substations. What we're proposing here today is to bring in more transmission, but reutilize the assets that we already own in the state. And in doing so, as we have more renewable power, we can bring in hydro from Canada in order to balance those resources, such that when you do turn a light switch, regardless if the wind is blowing or not, we can balance those resources with affordable resource. And when you think about, next slide, when you think about the resources that exist up in Quebec, National Grid operates a 2,000-megawatt HPDC line today. That line runs through Vermont and New Hampshire and brings in a lot of clean, affordable power. Because of the significant amount of hydro that's in Quebec, that line, on average, reduces energy prices by roughly 10%. And so what we want to do is put in a, a new line that will bring in more resources from Quebec in order to help reduce prices and also move forward our renewable energy that's already, um, developing here in the Granite State. Part of the way that we aim to do this is utilizing a, the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, a program of the Department of Energy called the Transmission Facilitation Program. Back in February, National Grid applied for this program, for this proposal, and we were invited back to Phase Two. Right now, we're putting together our application that's due on July 5th. If we're awarded this, this RFP, we will be allowed to move forward this project and get IIJA, um, funding in order to move it forward. So Twin States Clean Energy Link is really about bringing in transmission from Quebec and utilizing existing rights of way. This is key to our proposal. We understand, and have heard very much so from the community, that we should be utilizing, the infrastructure is already there. And so our proposal is really to do just that, to bury the line under state roads through Vermont and Route 135 in New Hampshire, and then connecting to the existing substation. So if you look at the map here, what we're proposing is that we will cross the international border in Ken, Vermont. We will bury the cable underneath state roads in Vermont, and then cross over into New Hampshire and Dalton, New Hampshire. We will go underneath the Connecticut River, using a process that we call horizontal drilling, such that we're not disturbing the Connecticut River bed. And then Route 135 buried underneath that road through New Hampshire from Dalton into Monroe, New Hampshire. And the reason why we want to get to Monroe, New Hampshire is because National Grid currently operates at the Comerford Substation, and we can use that land where previous converter station existed for that HPDC line that I spoke about earlier. And then use the exact same right-of-way. We would not need to expand that right-of-way. We would stay within the existing right-of-way coming all the way down to Londonderry. This is what the right-of-way looks like today. So there are three transmission towers in that right-of-way. Uh, three lines in that right-of-way. In the middle is that HPDC line that exists today. And then on the side of it are two smaller lines. They're rated at 230 KV voltage. Those, uh, lines will continue to be there, so we're not going to expand that right-of-way, but we're going to restring new lines on those structures, such that we can bring it up to a higher voltage at 345 KV.
So you're going to take down the existing structures and put in new structures? You're not going to add more structures?
Chair, actually, what I'm, what we're going to do is keep those structures and put up new wire.
New wire?
New wire.
Alright, so are you going to put structures on the, on, on the ends? Alright, you've got three structures. Are you adding structures on the ends?
No.
So you're not going to, you're not going to take down any more trees and/or anything else, such as EverSource has already done?
Ryan, bring up our transmission line engineer.
Because I, I deal on a daily basis with the, the recent EverSource expansion and the number of trees being taken down, you know, along people's properties.
No, so, um, to, to give you an overview, so we have the cross-section here, as Terron mentioned. We have the two 230 KV lines on the outside of the right-of-way. As part of this project, we're not looking to expand, but we do need to reconstruct the circuits, the 230 KV circuits, in order to create space for two new 345 KV lines.
Yeah, which generally those, those wind up on bigger towers.
They do. So what we're looking to...
So the towers are going to change.
We will be replacing the, the two structures on the outside in Londonderry, yes.
Okay. What's your mitigation plan for all the homeowners you're going to affect?
We are not expanding the right-of-way. We are rolling the circuits to a vertical configuration.
Okay, I want to be really clear. You're not expanding the right-of-way, alright? You're not taking down more trees in that right-of-way now that abut people's homes. I want, because I already went through this with EverSource.
I completely understand the concern, so we are not increasing the width of the right-of-way as a result of this project. There may be some sideline trimming, but no wholesale vegetation removal. So it'd be more lemming, because we do maintain this right-of-way to approximately its 350-foot width.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat myself. The current abutters to this right-of-way are not going to see any change in the larger trees, only vegetation. The larger trees are not going to be harvested and taken out. You're only trimming and doing vegetation.
It will be generally vegetation management, sideline trimming, yes. I can't speak for every tree, but I will say that there are no large pockets that we are aware of that would require removal.
I mean, recently EverSource expanded their, their corridor. You're aware of that, right?
Very much so, yes.
Okay. If, if you went out to this corridor, and the number of conversations I've had to have with homeowners and everything, who didn't really understand what was happening and the mitigation that had to be done, that they didn't understand that they were eligible for, until they had to contact the town council, who found out about it at the same time, and had to bring the state reps out, had to call the governor's office, and all these other pieces. I'm not going to have to do that this time.
I will say that we will do our absolute best to clearly communicate the scope of work.
Okay, again, that's what EverSource told me. Okay, you're going to do your absolute best to communicate what you're going to do, and then the trees are gone, and they don't grow again for another 25 years. I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I understand you have a job to do. I probably understand it better than most. But what I want to know is, is are those abutters to that corridor going to now be looking at power lines, which, like it or not, reduces the value of their homes from the perception of people who don't understand what the ohms mean, and the ohms are higher inside your house than they are on the power lines?
If I, if I could, um, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry to give you a hard time, but I've been going through this for the last two years.
Um, if I, the, there, there's, we, first of all, I think Jess should walk you through some of the cross-sections.
I'm sure Jess is a nice lady. I heard her name is Farrell.
That's right. If, if I could answer your first question, Mr. Chairman, as it relates to outreach and communication, um, I certainly understand, um, that there's been some concern. Um, I can speak...
Oh, concern is the latest word you can possibly use. How about people being aghast? How about people standing in their driveway screaming?
I've, uh, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I've, uh, I've done work for National Grid for coming up on a decade, doing exactly this kind of community outreach effort. Uh, and we're, we're more than happy to dive in and, and understand more ways that we could over-communicate with folks. I can't possibly stress that enough on behalf of...
Go walk along the EverSource corridor. There are people who every tree in their backyard is gone. And they had no idea. But they were going to communicate with everybody and do the best they could too. No, no disrespect meant, but that's what they told us to.
Right. Um, you know, as Jess mentioned, the, the right-of-way is, you know, pretty neatly kept to the 300-foot width, but...
I've seen the National Grid right-of-way. It comes right up against the, um, the Londonderry fishing game. I know where it is.
Uh, before I turn it back to Jess, though, to answer your original question, I mean, we'd love to have a conversation about ways we can maximize the outreach and communication. I mean, my team and I will knock on every door on the, on the right-of-way and make sure folks know exactly what's coming, when, and understand individual sets of concerns, not only as it relates to visual, but also, uh, construction impacts, noise. Uh, if folks work from home and they have, uh, concern about construction noise on any certain given day, I'm, I would, I love this stuff. I'd love to sit down with you and understand more about how we can possibly communicate.
Let me ask the council a question. Is the council okay if I ask National Grid to work with one of our staff members and explain to them exactly what they're going to do? And I'm thinking along the lines of a guy who's just not gray at all, John Tardier.
Yes, absolutely.
So John Tardier is our town engineer, who I'd like you to work with on this and everything. John is the most rules-oriented black-and-white guy I know. And you want to know what? I'd like you to explain it to him, so, and I've known John for 20 years, so he can explain it to, to us. You know, and, and we understand it. I understand what you're trying to do, and I understand what you're trying to do is important. I get it. But I want to know from John what it is, because John knows what we deal with every day from a, you know, a planning portion of this company. We good with that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You'll be happy to introduce him to Mr. Tardier?
We'd love, we'd love the opportunity.
No, and, and I don't want to get, I don't want to give you guys a hard time here, because I know you guys, you're just here doing a job, and I understand that. But I'd like Mr. Tardier to understand, so he can explain it to us.
But I think they also have to realize the reality that we're faced with, with, with what's happened in the past.
I, well, y'all go, y'all go along, I'll, I'll walk you along the EverSource corridor if you like, and I'll show you what not, what, I'll show you what people really preferred wouldn't have happened.
I think that'd be a great idea.
I think that's probably the nicest way to say it. And, and Mr. Tardier knows where they are too, and he can show you too. But you know, these people, you know, for lack of a better term, got blindsided. And, and those that were smart enough, or astute enough, or whether they were just, you know, they were just asking questions, got to somebody and got mitigation and got a little bit better than what they would have gotten. And I really don't want to go through another two years of that.
Understood.
So, but, but thank you. I think you're, I think you're, you're down, I know we have a power issue. I know we have to do something. I get it.
Agreed.
But, you know, but we'll continue to listen to you. Sorry for interrupting.
No, Chair, if you'd like to let them go through this and have you show on the next page how it will be designed, staying within their 350-foot width.
I'd love for Mr. Tardier to explain it to me. Because, you know, he, he's a very friendly guy. He's a nice man.
Yeah, he is.
He's just very engineering. He's a very town engineering ti, kind of guy. So please, I'm sorry that I interrupted.
No, not, not at all.
So this is what we have for an existing cross-section north of Wiley Hill Road. As part of the proposed project, what we're looking to do is take the existing 230 KV's and push them to the outside of the right-of-way with the center line 45-foot offside at either edge. By doing that, it allows us to create space within the existing right-of-way to install two new 345 KV lines. By doing this, we don't need to expand the right-of-way, and it allows us to keep the 230 KV lines energized while we build out the new structures.
So essentially what you're saying is you'll go from three horizontally-formatted structures to five, to four vertical structures and maintaining that center horizontal.
See, and, and again, not...
Yes, and it'll be symmetrical about the center circuit, so...
And again, what I got after they did this the last time was, is that we can't be within 75 feet. A tree can't be there, because it's going to affect the line. And then they told me it was a federal law, and then I found that it wasn't a federal law. It was actually EverSource policy. So not to keep dwelling on the same point, but I think you're sort of getting it.
Oh, I do understand that. And the way that we have oriented the structures does satisfy our vegetation management criteria, including FERC's FAC 003 guidelines, which I believe were what you were referencing there. So this is the configuration north of Wiley Hill Road, and I will say that this is a conceptual configuration. We're working on optimizing the structure heights to bring them down to at or below the height of the existing circuit in the middle, which averages about 110 feet. So basically, we're looking at increasing wire tensions and installing additional structures to lower the overall height of the structures, so that we're reducing visual impacts. So, south of Wiley Hill Road, as you have mentioned, there, we, the New England Power Corridor parallels the EverSource corridor. So you have two 345 KV lines set up horizontally configured on the left side of the page, uh, with the 230 KV lines centering on the, the existing DC line on the right-hand side. As part of the project, similar to the north of Wiley Hill Road section, with the National Grid lines, we're looking to, again, move the 230 KV to vertical structures, push them towards the edge of the New England Power right-of-way to create space for the two new 345 KV lines. And we leave the 450 KV DC line in the center of the New England Power right-of-way alone.
So what you're looking at here is, on the left-hand side is the EverSource right-of-way.
Questions, other than all the ones I rudely interrupted with?
So just to be clear, the, the route that's pictured on the slide that you just had up...
Sorry.
That's the only transmission lines that are proposed for an upgrade or, or change?
So that is the, uh, the vast majority of it. We would be, we are proposing to connect in with the EverSource system. So there may be some, uh, minor line spurs to connect to the proposed new substation that we're working on fine-tuning presently.
It's a little bit of soccer fields where they converge.
Thank you. Actually, I do have another question, Mr. Chairman. Um... Were you, so they end 214, 451 DC, that line that is in the picture, as you just previously mentioned, tying in the EverSource and stuff like that, would you be willing to email the council or maybe through the town manager the proposed changes and those, like, kind of like a map with an overlay similar to this with the other?
So we're, we can get you what we have. Again, it is conceptual, we're working on fine-tuning the information and the design to make sure we're reducing impacts and being mindful, but we can give you what we have, yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I should've mentioned earlier that we're very in the early stages. So to the concerns that were, were made very abundantly clear, part of the reason why we're here today is that we want to have these kind of conversations very early and often. So part of it is just getting feedback in terms of how we should be looking at the project, such that when our engineers, folks like Jess and others, are designing the project, we can design it with public input in mind.
Absolutely, you're gonna love Mr. Tardier. He's, he's a very thorough engineer, and your engineers can all speak the same language with him, it's gonna-
We will love that.
And we'll all learn a lot.
Absolutely.
We have Matt speak to the substations.
All right, Matt Spofford, I'm the substation engineer with National Grid today. I'll be talking about, as part of this project, like Tehran mentioned earlier, we have a new substation being built up in Monroe, New Hampshire. I was able to scum afford it earlier, that's what we call the equipment up there. Also in Dunbarton, and we would need a new one here as well in Londonderry. We're still looking at sites for the substation. It's a fairly large substation tying in our National Grid lines, EverSource lines, to distribute this power through the area. And we looked at it originally. What we prefer to do as a company is open-air substations. We realized in Londonderry that's not realistic. It would require something on the scale of about nine acres of land. We don't wanna impact the city in that way. And so what we are looking at instead is a gas-insulated substation. We have a picture of one on the screen here that's in our system now. You can see the transmission lines overhead coming into the larger structures. On that large building, kind of right in the center-left of the picture there, is a gas-insulated substation. Essentially what it is, is all of the equipment has gas within it as an insulating medium. It all fits in this one building. And there's a smaller building you can see off to the left side where the van is located that has all of our protection equipment that allowed the lines to operate, trip, and come back online if anything happens at the substation. And by going with the gas-insulated substation versus the open air, we reduce the footprint from around nine acres to around three and a half. So we're really trying to do what we can to limit how much space we need for the substation and make it work. That also includes future build-out of the substation in addition to what we would need for this project. So we're planning for the future, so that we're not clearing additional land down the line, coming in saying, you know, here we have the substation that's going in, and then coming back to you 10 years later saying, we're going to make this site larger. We're planning for the future with it as well.
So are you familiar with the Scobie Pond substation?
Somewhat, that is an EverSource substation though, so limited.
I'm just using it as a comparison. Is it, is it the same, is it the same size as Scobie Pond? Is it bigger, is it smaller? Because we all know where Scobie Pond is.
I believe I was asked this question before, and I can't say with 100% certainty, but I'm fairly certain Scobie Pond is an open-air substation.
It is.
So this would be about 40% of the size of that substation.
That gives us a good comparison, thank you.
So this is just another image here. This is one of our existing substations being built in 2005, a gas-insulated substation on the inside. This is what it looks like, just for reference. They build this large building, they house all of the equipment in it. You have circuit breakers, you have a gas-insulated bus inside of there. And it's a really, it's a good design, it's, it's well-thought-out, and it allows you to fit a lot of equipment that would normally take up a really significant footprint in a small amount of space. And we have quite a few vendors out there that offer this, and they're really passionate about it, it's very well-designed.
Any questions?
Why would your power company prefer the open substation over this?
In general, they're easier to maintain. It is just easier to build drive access, to get the lines in and out of there, to get the maintenance trucks in and out. Gas-insulated substations, they're a bit more unique. You really need to work with the vendors a bit more to maintain them. I, I don't know that I can say that the maintenance is more expensive, but they, we don't have a lot of them in the system. They're more expensive to build, and so we generally try to keep the open air so that our folks internally can maintain them and operate them. But we do have experts in-house that do work on these on a daily basis.
And the gases used, are they toxic or volatile to anyone in case of like an accidental release? I mean, I'm naive, so I don't know.
So the gases inside the equipment, as of right now, they're working on technology with different gases. Right now, there's sulfur hexafluoride, which is considered a greenhouse gas. And they've come a long way in terms of, I'm fairly certain none of our substations have had significant leaks at any point recently. I don't have the exact data, but we have to report all of our SF6 leaks to, I believe, the Environmental Protection Agency. And the vendors have come a long way in ensuring that doesn't happen, and we have pretty advanced monitoring systems as well to detect that.
Last question, do you have, do you work with like local fire departments and stuff since there's toxic chemicals and like just on what's in there? Do a site walkthrough and everything? I mean, I know that's part of the planning process, but-
I'm not sure if we've done that in the past, I think we would be open to it, I guess.
We would definitely be open to that. So in places where we installed a GS and the other, we don't have that many gas-insulated substations, as Matt was saying, typically air-insulated substations is what we built, for a number of reasons. They tend to be a lot more cheaper, it's less engineering complexity, and a whole host of factors. But in places that we do have them, we tend to do trainings with the local fire department, such that the local fire department knows the plan and knows the risk management and crisis management approaches that we would take. I should note that we've had these on our system for over a decade now, and we have not had any incidents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, this would have to go through the fire department anyways, part of the planning process?
There's a number, I mean, this is a conceptual early view. There are, there are more steps for them to take than they probably would like to take, and probably more steps than anybody even understands.
Thank you. We should clarify, we are very early in the process right now. So when you think about this project, right now, we're having outreach to communities. We're doing it outside of the formal governance process. So when we start permitting, we're gonna have to do public comment and public outreach during that period. We're starting way before that. And we're planning to start our permits around the fall, end-of-year timeframe. There will be tons of public comment with that, but we're planning on doing open houses with the communities this summer, such that we're getting more and more input from communities.
No, it's great, and-
We would then start, if we get our permits within the next, that takes two years to do. So we're not talking about construction until the 2026 timeframe.
Thank you.
Are you guys currently connected to the power plant in town? Does that go down the National Grid corridor?
Is that the-
It's a gas-fired power plant up in northern Londonderry?
So we do have a substation in North Flitchfield that ties into that.
And so that does go down the National, go over to National Grid, okay. I thought it did, I just couldn't remember. Okay, anything else?
We're almost done, I promise.
Yeah, no worries. You guys were patient.
So I'll be brief on these couple of slides, and then we can get into some of the specifics about the Londonderry numbers as well. We are in the process, as part of this US Department of Energy, not education, RFP process, we are assembling a community benefits package totaling into hundreds of millions of dollars for both of the host states, Vermont and New Hampshire. The idea being that these funds go towards community-identified needs and projects with a wide range of backgrounds. And part of the reason that we wanna talk about this tonight is start a conversation with the town about projects and needs and other areas that you have previously identified or think about currently that we might be able to be supportive with. Again, you know, we've got, we've got a long time to go with this project slated to go into service in 2030, 2031. But, you know, these conversations are important to have now, and we'll follow up with the town manager, et cetera, to make sure we're connecting on this. We're also looking to partner with economic development agencies and other organizations to help meet those community needs and reinvestment opportunities. It's important to note that we've partnered with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and local unions here in New Hampshire. Specifically, Local 104 comes to mind with, as I understand it, have had an increase in the number of line workers, et cetera, that are available here in-state to support a job like this. And as Tehran's mentioned throughout, we will lower energy costs for New Hampshire residents and businesses. I thought you were gonna say something. And then, you know, the bidirectionality of the line that Tehran mentioned, we're really excited about because both the upgrades we're making to the system and the bidirectional nature of the, of the line will allow onshore and offshore renewable generators in New England to export Canada, export power to Canada during times of surplus. And I touched on this, Mr. Chairman, stakeholder collaboration. I can't stress enough how important this is to National Grid. We wanna be knocking doors, we wanna recognize that nobody understands, nobody consumes, no two people consume information in the same way. So making sure we're finding different ways to reach people in your town is really important to us, and that includes you. Sure, so I spoke about this earlier, that projects like this will help to reduce the cost of energy for New England. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that this project like this helped reduce our dependency on natural gas. And so this project is really meant to do just that. As Sean was noting, that we'll be able to not only bring affordable hydro from Quebec into New England through this project, but we will be able to send Quebec renewables when we're overproducing renewables, when the wind's blowing too much or the sun's shining too much. And so that's a huge benefit of this project. And then we're, we partner with Citizens Energy, a nonprofit that was started back in the 1970s in order to really help home heating assistance nowadays and invest in solar projects and transmission projects. And as part of that commitment, Citizens Energy will be reinvesting 100, over 100 million dollars back into the host communities. And so we spoke about what those look like, we talked about things like realization programs, workforce development, but we'd really love to hear from the communities, understand how best to utilize that money. And then this project will also reduce greenhouse gas emissions for New England by roughly 4 million metric tons per year. Our estimates, and we'd love to continue to have a discussion with Londonderry about our, the contribution to how this project will help to generate tax revenue for the community. Our estimates show that based on the length of the right of way, the upgrades that Jess and Matt spoke about, we're talking roughly 750,000 per year in additional revenue to the, to the community.
Anything further?
And just that we, this is very early on in the process, we do have a commitment to you to really make sure we're doing what's best for the project and what's best for the community. And so we would love to continue this discussion as people talk to their neighbors and talk to their friends. We have our contact information up there, please do send us your questions and your feedback.
Okay, anything further from the council, I've seen closing comments, but anything further from the council? So, I mean, one of the advantages or disadvantages about being around a long time is, is that you've seen a lot. We had a power plant come to town that, you know, divided the community, and, you know, and they, you know, like, like all people who come to town, they come in and they tell us they're gonna do X and, you know, long story short is, it was built, and it pays us in excess of $5 million a year. We have a, a gas line that comes through the middle of town that goes to that power plant. Because it's a gas-fired turbines and everything else. There was a lot of controversy around that, and there was a lot of things, a lot of promises made, and a lot of things set up front, and, you know, we wound up having to do a lot of work to make sure everybody was upholding all of that. You heard about the recent EverSource piece and everything. You're gonna be met with a skeptical community, because we've been through a lot over the last 20 years. And you're gonna be met with a skeptical, you know, town council, because we've seen a lot over the last 20 years. So we're gonna be watching closely, we're gonna be listening closely, and we want, in all seriousness, we want you to go explain it to Mr. Tardier, so he can come back and explain it to the people of Londonderry. So he can be at those workshops and answer those questions of how it affects this community. I do know that you're all here trying to put your best foot forward, and you're trying to do all the right things, and you only have the answers that you have today, and I understand that. But do understand that we are going to be, I don't wanna use the word suspicious, so I'll stay with skeptical, and that we're going to be asking a lot of questions. So while I understand the need, you know, our job is to protect the 42 square miles of Londonderry. Because as you heard when you heard earlier, we love this place, and that's our job. So is there anything else from the council? All right, we're, we'll definitely be looking forward to hearing from you, and thank you for your patience in being here this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate the time, and we hope to earn the Londonderry's trust.
I hope you do too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Kelly, capital improvement committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are beginning the 2025-2030 CIP committee process. One of the first steps in that is for the council to appoint the members for that committee. There's a memorandum before you in your packets suggesting that you accept the nominations as presented.
You're good with being on CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know the potential dates?
So Amy Kezak, our comprehensive planner, I believe, sent an email last week suggesting an initial kickoff meeting, and from there, future dates will be sorted depending on availability of members.
I've already had communications with Amy on that date, I'll be calling in on that meeting, so.
All right, I'll accept the motion to appoint-
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna step away from this.
Okay. Let the record be shown that Councilor Butler has recused himself. I'm gonna accept the motion for Town Council Rep Ted Combs, School Board Rep Bob Slater, Budget Committee Sarah Meyer, Planning Board Jake Butler and Jeff Penna, to appoint them to the, this year's capital improvement committee.
So moved?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sticking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you very much.
I'm abstaining for voting for myself.
You can vote for yourself on this, it's okay.
That's good. And I.
Okay, is that all you need on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Lithia Springs finalization.
Mr. Chairman, that was the item that you mentioned just at the beginning. There is a license agreement with the seller of the Lithia Springs parcel. It's a little hard to notice, but there is a sign that gets you to Elwood Orchards on the corner of High Range Road and 102. And as part of the agreement that's previously been approved by the Conservation Commission and the town council, we are executing at this point the license agreement that gives authority for that sign to remain there so that folks can continue to find their way to Elwood Farm even after the town closes on the Lithia Springs transaction.
Are there any questions? All right, so as I stated earlier, I need you, we'll need to place this town clerk or town manager's office. You need to come in, you have to have a notary there when you sign the document, have them witness your signature.
We'll leave it with my executive assistant, Mr. Chairman, and there are other notaries in the building, in the town clerk's office, but also in the finance department, depending on the time of day.
Okay, well, you know, call ahead and make sure there's a notary available for you. But sometime, it has to be signed this week.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty, approval of 35 Gilchrist Road, release of Conservation Easman transaction. My understanding, as stated earlier, is, is that you are looking for consensus from the council to take this to the Conservation Commission?
That's right, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna elaborate a little bit.
Feel free.
Because, you know, there's been, I think, some confusion about this transaction, and it is, it is a confusing transaction. But I wanna just, you know, go- But I want to just, you know, go through as quickly as I can how we got here and exactly what I'm asking the town council for tonight. So in 2003, the town entered into an agreement for restrictive covenant and open space conservation easements with Gilchrist Realty Holdings LLC and Gilchrist Realty Holdings II LLC. And the agreement was not with Mr.
Ronzello.
Ronzello. It, there is a reference to Mr. Ronzello in the purchase and sales agreement simply to identify the source deed as a, as a matter of title, essentially where Gilchrist's title came from, but that party is not a party to this transaction.
Is it Mr. Elmer Pease?
He, I believe he's in the chain of title as well.
He was involved. I was thinking, he was the owner in 2003, I believe.
Correct. I recall seeing that name.
Ron, there's two pages there, on each one.
And there, there, I'm going to be using two different terms to go over this, but I want to be clear because I can, I can respond to some of the concerns that were raised in public comment. The conservation restriction presently is encumbering this parcel that I have highlighted here. This is referred to as the orchard lot in the applicable easement and restriction document. This lot here is two things. It's the Nevins, which ultimately was developed, and it's this area of buffer in here, which it is correct, is owned and restricted by the Nevins and will continue to be restricted as open space going forward. So I want to be 100% clear that there is no proposal to develop nor, nor can this area be, be developed. It is to remain as open space.
And that's part of the special election we did in 2003 when we, when we did this, right?
That's exactly right.
And there's approximately 500 to 800 feet of conservation easement there between that and that parcel, right?
650.
650?
So you're looking at 700 feet.
So it's 700 feet from the nearest home in the Nevins to that property line.
Yeah, let me redraw it here from this.
Because I keep hearing about a fence. You hear a fence 700 feet away?
Yeah. I will address that in just a minute, Mr. Chairman, but it's about 638, 640 feet. And it should be noted that we.
And it looks like some of them are almost 800 or 900 feet.
Easily. And this.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you. Is the fence going to go along the property line?
It will. It will go on the property line.
So they're going to put up a fence that this gentleman brought up earlier that he wants maintained eight to 900, six to 900 feet away?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So I'm clear and I understand.
Representative Perez was, was the one who brought that up in the first instance, and she had expressed a concern about, you know, people, kids in the, in the woods there. And she asked and obtained a petition from a number of people who live in the Nevins that we integrate a requirement for a fence into the purchase and sales agreement. That's exactly what we did.
So again, just to be clear, two to three football fields away?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, something that we, came to us as feedback from the community, a request from the community, and we implemented it. Another item that came to us as a request and feedback from the community that we implemented was a requirement, a prohibition on garden-style apartments. I have a request here from the Board of Directors on May 9th, 2022, making that specific request that, you know, that condition should be integrated into the purchase and sales agreement. We did exactly that, Mr. Chairman. We implemented the request that came to us from a member of the community, from a number of members of the community for their protection. So from 2003 forward, what happened is this, and I'll, and I'll, I'll give you the background on how, how the 2003 agreement came to be. Gilchrist, and so I'm referring here to Masetti, as was pointed out, initially proposed a 361-unit development, spread across both this lot and this lot. So 361 units were originally proposed. After negotiations with Gilchrist, the town called a special meeting of the legislative body, body, and voted to raise and appropriate $2.9 million to acquire certain development rights from Gilchrist in exchange for Gilchrist discontinuing that 361-unit apartment complex development and to construct instead 125 age-restricted units on the project lot only, leaving a significant portion of the project lot, but also the orchard lot restricted. That article passed and the town entered into the agreement. Under the agreement, Gilchrist agreed to impose a restrictive covenant and open space conservation easement on the orchard lot and on portions of the project lot, and that's this protected, protected area here. These restrictions were defined as open space and conservation easement restrictions. It should be noted that there is no public access to the orchard lot. It is overgrown, it's significantly overgrown, and there is, you know, some level of contamination that's associated with the historical application of pesticides to fruit trees, same kind of contamination that would likely exist in any other orchard in town.
If memory serves me, that orchard hasn't been served in 40 to 45 years.
I think that's, that's exactly right. So a couple, one, one concern that was, this is important, and I'll come back to this in a moment, but, you know, this is not your average charitable easement or conservation restriction because what it, what it says is the, and I'm talking about the restriction that is currently encumbering the parcel that we're talking about, the parcel to be developed, has, has this provision that says, quote, "The town, by appropriate town vote, may amend or revoke the conservation easement in part or in entirety, or in the entirety, which amendment or revocation shall be effective upon recording in the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds." So it has a built-in amendment termination provision anticipating that circumstances might change in the future. That brought us to 20, to the 2022 town meeting, where the town proposed two warrant articles that appeared on that ballot. The first sought authority to release the conservation easement for no less than $2.65 million to be paid to the town, and then the second appropriated from that amount, $750,000 to be used within a reasonable period of time by the Conservation Commission to acquire a conservation parcel of greater, equal or greater conservation value. So we're doing at least no net conservation harm and likely net conservation good. The remaining $1.9 million would be available for the town's general purposes, and as we don't have a current use for that $1.9 million, it will lapse to the UFB at the end of the year and then be available either to directly lower the tax rate, as the council has the opportunity to do in the fall, or to support the taxpayers in, in other ways, such as, for example, by using UFB to obviate the need to ask taxpayers for a tax appropriation. From a conservation standpoint, if, if memory serves, the Conservation Commission previously weighed in on this, I think at the time that we started these negotiations, perhaps in advance of the, of the ballot vote, and was either unanimous or entirely, mostly unanimous in, in considering this. The Conservation Committee, Commission felt that this parcel has some value as a wildlife habitat, but it's really too, too small and isolated from other natural areas to host a robust natural community, and it really is, is an eyesore. We get complaints about it, the Conservation Commission gets complaints about it, and so there's an opportunity, I think, to do some good here. So that, those two warrant articles passed, they passed narrowly, but they passed. And as far as, you know, there was a complaint, a complaint that was made in public comment that there's been inadequate, there's been inadequate discussion with the community about this. Respectfully, I don't think that that's correct. I can tell you that there were two public hearings on the budget the year that this passed. I can tell you that these warrant articles were made available to the public, and there was vigorous and healthy public debate, at least at the, one of the hearings, public hearings on the budget. I believe there was discussion about this at the deliberative session. There was a, an article, a letter to the editor that the chairwoman of the Conservation Commission and I sent to the Londonderry Times. There was a healthy back and forth on Facebook as well, and I talked about this when I briefed the public on the warrant articles by video that year. And as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's still additional opportunity for public interaction and deliberation on this matter. What I am here for tonight is the following. The, the town has negotiated a purchase and sales agreement that implements the ballot vote that was taken more than a year ago now, and it reserves to the Town Council and to the Conservation Commission the right to approve or not approve the terms of the transaction as presented in the purchase and sales agreement that I included in your packet. As this is a conservation restriction, you know, really, the Conservation Commission is charged with the management and control of conservation property, and this will be presented to the Conservation Commission, I would expect at their next meeting, but if not, then sometime soon, to finalize the town's approval of releasing this easement in accordance with the ballot vote that was taken. The, there is a, this, this project will have to go through the normal, as you pointed out, planning and zoning process. There, you know, concerns were, were raised about additional screenings here and maintenance of the fence. I suggest, as you did, that those are matters best handled by the planning board as part of their own process. There, there was a concern about the, the groundwater here. This is, I believe, in the groundwater management zone attached to the Tinkham Superfund site, and, and if it's not, it's, it's close, but there is a restriction on the use of groundwater that's by, by the developer. No wells for human consumption may permissibly be drilled on this site. As far as, you know, what people were told at the time, you know, these are complex instruments and it's, it's certainly possible that there were misunderstandings back in 2002 when these things were being discussed. But what I can tell, what I have is the conservation instrument, which is a matter of public record, it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and it very clearly permits exactly what we're doing here. I would also point out to you, Mr. Chairman, that by letter dated March 24th, 2022, I asked the Attorney General's Office to confirm that they did not believe there was a legal impediment to releasing this conservation restriction, at least from a charitable trust standpoint. Charitable trusts is just how the state asserts jurisdiction over matters such as this. By letter dated March 31st, they indicated that they did not see a legal impediment and they were not asserting jurisdiction. So this has all been gone over at some significant length, leading us to this, this evening's Town Council meeting. Understand the council does have the right to approve or not approve the terms that I'm presenting, and if the council has concerns about any of those terms, I'm happy to answer any of those questions. But what I am looking for is a consensus of the council, that the terms of the agreement, which are in your packet, are acceptable, that the transaction can proceed, and that the council is not going to be looking to invoke that contingency tonight. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, as far as, you know, that, that public discussion, I announced at the last Town Council meeting three weeks ago that we had come to terms with Gilchrist. Members, at least one member of the public has reached out and asked to inspect the materials. In fact, I believe that member of the public showed up without an appointment and was able to do so, as, as was that member of the public's right. All of that is to say that, you know, we, we set that person up in a conference room, they went through the materials based on my announcement and the inclusion of this contract in the packet tonight, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions the council might have.
Any questions? We're not taking questions from the public right now, I'm speaking to the council. Any questions?
Cool question from Mike.
Yeah.
So we give our consensus tonight, but then it still goes to the conservation.
That's correct. The council should view this as the last opportunity for the Town Council to invoke this contingency.
Okay.
But really, you know, to my earlier point, this is not the sale of municipal property. What we're talking about is the release of conservation property, and under RSA 36A, conservation property is managed and controlled by the Conservation Commission. So I would view them as having primary, a primary role in this transaction.
Yeah, they cannot execute a contract, they cannot make the final decision.
That's correct.
So if they don't like the terms, they can?
Yes. There's a contingency for the, for the Conservation Commission to say no as well.
So Ron, in other words, they can recommend things back to us, but we have to execute here.
Perfect.
We can either accept or not.
I just want them to be able to.
Yeah, we can either accept or not accept what they, what they have to say. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, hold on, this is not a public hearing, okay? This is not open to public comment. You have sat here for two and a half hours, so out of respect for you sitting here, I'll entertain brief comments. So come on up. Hold on, let the. Brief, Dan.
My name is Kristen Herroyan, 29 Morrison Drive, and I am one of the abutters. My question was, you spoke of contamination on the property, the Gilchrist property. If there's mitigation done, will that mitigation affect us over on Morrison, like contamination in the air, spreading to us, or anything like that?
All right, so you need to look at us, but I'm not an EPA expert. What I've witnessed on other sites that have this pesticide issue is, is a number of inches or feet, I'm not really sure, maybe, it may be somewhere between inches and feet of the top soil has to be taken off, that has to be taken off-site, that has to be remediated someplace else. So there is, there is that that would have to happen. They would have to clear that site and do those things, much like they did for your site where you live, and much like they did at Home Depot.
Will it become airborne and spread to us is my concern.
I don't, I don't understand or have an expertise in how they go about doing that or what the process is. So that's something that we would have to ask someone else who knows that much better than we do.
And we don't know if they're going to do mitigation or not.
What I can tell you is that in the limited discussions that have occurred, they have indicated that they understand there is, there are state requirements regulating this, they intend to comply with those state requirements. I imagine this is something that the planning board will want assurances about, and I think that would be an appropriate place to understand that mitigation process a little bit better and to make sure that it's enforced to the extent that, that we can enforce it through the planning board as part of the site plan approval process.
What I can tell you is that the planning department and the planning board do not take these things lightly.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. Did you say in 2003?
Amen, address.
The town paid 2.9 million?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm glad you asked that question.
There was a special election and.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, and, and we're.
I think I know what the next question is going to be.
And we're selling this for 2.6.
So the portion of the consideration.
Yep.
That attaches to the restriction on the orchard lot is 1.23 million dollars.
Yep.
So that's what's being released here.
Okay. So.
So they're paying 2.6 million for what we paid 1.23 million for.
Okay, so bear with me here. Okay, the Gilchrist Road conversation easement, conservation easement, I heard at the meeting, it would be a few houses. Now we're looking at 96 three-bedroom units. So.
So that's not final. That's their, that's what they're saying. They have to go to the.
They're saying a minimum.
the planning board.
They're saying a minimum, okay?
They have to go through a whole process with the planning board.
Yep, just, just hear me out here, okay?
Go ahead.
So, it could be more than 96 units, okay?
It could be less.
One, no, because if you read the paperwork, it says a minimum.
They still have to go through the planning board.
Okay. So, to be conservative, all right, if you look at a three-bedroom home, if you add one child per bedroom, that is a total of 192 children. I bring this up because I pay one tax bill, okay? Whatever you do here impacts the school as well. So, 192 children added to the school population. Has anybody looked at what the increase of the cost would, of that be?
The 192 number is, is completely off. We use a factor of like .065, right?
Somewhere around there, yes, but there's...
So, it's a half a child per unit, .065, and we have those numbers...
For a three-bedroom unit?
We have those numbers going all the way out into the school district, and they've done all the analysis, that's why we're using .065. Because all these apartments that we built, that they said we were gonna get hundreds of children from, we got 10.
And that's, that's borne out by the Woodmont, fiscal impact.
So, I don't want people to think there's 192 kids coming to the school because we're, because of what you're saying, and I, and it's not being disrespectful, we use a different metric, because the metric has proven out.
Okay, so, based on your metric...
And I have the chairperson of the school board here, if I need to verify that.
So, ba, based on the metric, John, if you have 96 units, how many kids would you think is going to impact the school system?
It depends. I mean, because what we're finding in the community is, huh?
About 16.
So, that's from my, my...
I have a hard time believing you're only gonna have 16 kids in 96 units with three bedrooms.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, Dan, people, this is, these are, these are the metrics that have bared out over the last 10 years. And I said, I've got the chairman of the school board here, we can bring him up and ask him.
Because if you...
But that, that's where it's bared out.
I mean, I, I talked to somebody today...
And I'm not trying to dispute with you, Dan, I just don't want people thinking there's 200 kids coming, because that's not what the math has been telling us.
Okay, well...
But I get your point.
This, this is my point, okay?
I understand.
We, the town in 2003, voted to purchase that easement in order to kinda curtail the explosion that the town was, was experiencing in the school system, because it just adds more to the tax base, police, fire, and everything else. Has anybody made a calculation, figured this out, how much is it gonna cost us to release this? Right now, it's saving us money, it's gonna cost us money.
So, that particular warrant article through special election...
Yep.
Combined with the, combined to a total of 16 million dollars that the town spent on open space...
Yep.
Under the premise that they were going to be able to defer, you know, students into the schools, because we were at 5,600 in 2005.
Yep.
Ever since 2005, we've done this. So, while, while we protected a lot of land, which was probably the right thing to do...
It was. I voted for that.
And on this particular one, I sat on the planning board, these 361 units they wanted to put in, what he failed to mention in part of that is, is they also wanted to add strip, a strip mall, they wanted to add an assisted living center, there was a lot more to it. So, we were looking at extreme push on services, that's why it came to the ballot. So, to say, how many services do I need based on 96 new homes? I mean, we, right now, based on our call per unit, we're gonna keep going up, any, every, we're gonna keep going up based on the age of our community, I'm more concerned about that than I am about adding housing. Now, and that's me and you having a conversation, that's how, that's how I sort of think about it.
I mean, it, over the weekend, you, you read another article of another 300 units up there on Akira Way.
Well, that's gonna, and we, we were all just finding out about that too.
Okay, but there's 300 units there, 96 units here, Woodmont, everything else. You're going to see an explosion in the school system. I granted, the town's gonna look back and say, hey, we made some money off of this deal, it's gonna cost us money down the road. This is not costing us anything right now, is what I'm saying.
So, two pieces, Woodmont's what's in the development agreement, they have to be tax neutral. So, whatever goes in there has to remain tax neutral, there's a formula they have to follow, it's a covenant that's filed with the deed. I can't speak to these other things because I just don't know them. You know, I understand what you're saying, but, un, un, you know, unfortunately, you know, in, in some ways, for all of us who've been here a long time, is, is every piece of open land, everybody gets a, gets an eye on, they wanna put a house on, because, because they're $800,000. You know, so, what you do is, is you try to protect it as much as you can.
I mean, you got, you got by Exit 5, you got another development there that's coming in, you know, for more housing.
So, what I've, so, so what I've got, so what I've got here is, is I've got a piece of land that, you know, we can recover the, the money on, the voters said to do it. The town council say, can't, can't, can't go back and say, nope, we're not doing it.
Well...
All right, so that, that's one thing, the voters voted on it, and they said, they said to do it. What we can do is, is through our processes, make sure the right thing that matches Londonderry gets built, that's what we can do.
Well, I know that when this first came up, I questioned a lot of this, and I, I was told that there's gonna be more information coming out, you'll get, you know, in this. I don't see, I don't go on Facebook, Mike, I'm sorry, all right? Facebook, to me, is not the place for, you know, finding out this information. You know, I come to you guys to find out this information, because I think it's important that, I think it's important that you would've had more meetings on this before you got to this stage, to maybe say, this is kind of what we're looking at, this would be the tax impact, police, fire, all right? Education, all right? This is what we could be looking at. Is it, are, are we gonna be losing money down the road? I think we are. I think that it's gonna cost the town more money down the road if you do this.
Well, the voters have already voted on it, so it has to go through the process. What gets built, there's public hearings, there's, you can go in front of the planning board, they control this now, we're only following what the voters said. And it doesn't matter if it passed by 33, or 333, or by one.
I understand that.
That's what they said.
But, when this was presented, okay, it would've been nice if it was presented to say, all right, this is how much it's going to be an impact as far as, you know, education, police, fire costs, and everything else. It wasn't, okay? It was, we're gonna make this kind of money. Well, if you're gonna tell me you're gonna make that kind of money, yeah, I, I'll vote for it, all right? I'm being short-sighted, I'm not looking down the road, I'm not planning ahead, all right? And when I look at this whole thing, and, and I see a lot of this going on, development here, development there, development there, I see the school is, is gonna cost us more money.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so...
I would hope that you would not vote for it. And you can always call me if you want to ask me something.
Mr. Chairman...
You have my number.
No, I don't, but, get it to me, and I will call you.
It's, it's, it's on the website, everybody else calls.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just briefly, you know, I, I think, you know, reasonable, as I said at the time, reasonable minds can disagree on this, whether it's a good idea, whether it's a bad idea. But as you pointed out, the voters, the voters did this weighing that we're talking about here tonight, and for a variety of reasons, I think also to include repurposing that site that it narrowly passed. A couple of things, there, there, there was, you know, a reference to somebody saying that this proposal was only gonna be a few houses. I could tell you, I never said that, nobody on my staff ever said that, and if somebody had said that, I would ask them, why are you paying 2.65 million dollars for a few houses? As far as the, the process concerns that were raised, we can always have more meetings, we can always take more time, but, I, I, you know, there, there, there is no dead-of-night stuff happening here, there is no back-room deal, there is no lack of legal process. This is, this has been gone over very carefully, and I agree, reasonable people can disagree on this, and I take Mr. Bouchard's points, he, he makes a number of good points. But, at every juncture, we have attempted to make sure that the public had the opportunity to tell us what they, they wanted to tell us, and I think that we've observed that scrupulously throughout.
Thank you, yes. Please be brief.
Tony D. Francesco, one Church Court. I think Kelly's information is, is, is correct, but I also want to respond to Mr. Bouchard's comments and, and, and help him understand that we all also voted for the 55 and older communities back then, and now we're saying that, that wasn't necessarily the right thing to do either. Gotta have, we gotta have a, a really good combination and a mix. I will tell you, standing here as a Realtor, what we're seeing in the industry now, and, and I can tell you, just recently, I put somebody into a five-bedroom home, zero kids, don't plan on having any, but we're putting people into three- and four-bedroom homes that the husband and wife are both working from home, and so they're using two bedrooms, one bedroom each, as an office. And there's a lot of that now going on, so, I think the metric that, that the school district, and historically we've used in the past, is actually gonna go down because of people using bedrooms as offices. Whether or not that happens or not, we have to wait and see, it's anecdotal, but I, I think there's, there's a good chance that that could happen based on what we're seeing in the real estate market today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, please be brief.
I'll make this brief, Ray Breisler. Mr. Malaguti responded to something I said in regards to being, the information being brought forward, and perhaps it has, maybe I've missed some of it, it was also mentioned that this was a, did I understand, this was a warrant article? What warrant article was that?
It was voted on in, at town meeting of 2022?
Was it a special town meeting?
No, it was regular town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it was Article 17 and Article 18 on the 2021 warrant, uh, 2022 warrant.
Okay, and it did pass, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you, ju, just once again, I, I, there's a lot of good ideas about this, reusing property, getting it back on the tax roll, all of that, the money, the town getting money back that they put up, unfortunately, that conservation land was not used, and I think conservation land is very important. But the other thing is that, I think this was mentioned about being a brownfield site. Now, what does that mean? Is, is it contaminated? I think, it was brought up that perhaps there are pesticides on the site, it, maybe it's been 40 years ago, nevertheless, apparently, there is pesticides on the site, and they're gonna have to remove the topsoil, I believe. Now, once you remove the topsoil, you can't just take it somewhere and dump it, it either has to be dealt with at a reprocessing place, or it has to be moved to another contaminated site, which, by the way, did happen on North Gilcrest, it was removed from that site and moved on to Woodmont's site, which is also technically a contaminated site. I could be wrong about that, but I've, I've checked on that, and apparently that is the case. If you, you go and ta, take a look off Pillsbury, a big pile of dirt there, okay? That was put there because it was removed from Gilcrest, because technically it's contaminated soil. Of course, now it's being dug into and used other places, we don't know where it's gonna be used. So, that, that is of concern. And, and by the way, I did mention about contaminated monitoring wells on technically the Nevin's site, because not only where the Nevin's houses are, east of that, going towards this site, is a contaminated site, it's a superfund site that is the Tinkham Superfund Site. That is of concern. We need to know what is, what is, what the contamination is, and what we're gonna be dealing with, okay? Because if you think that's gonna be conservation land that kids are gonna go out and play in, that's not the case. A lot of it is wetland, okay? It's not usable land. So, and the other thing I brought up is, is about the sewer, that's gonna be a cost to the town.
All right, Ray.
What?
Are we, are we good?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, 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 it's, are you, are you good? Are you all done?
I'm gonna wait for Mr. Malaguti to respond.
Sewers are tax neutral, there, there is no cost to the town, sewers are tax neutral, the, the users pay for them. Is, is, is there anything else?
That should do it, thank you.
I, I appreciate it, thank you. It's just for the public's clarification, I don't know that we're moving contaminated soil around town, I'm sure DES would have, would have something to say about that, I don't want that to, saying that the town is saying that anyone's moving contaminated soil around town. And as far as the, the sites are concerned, it's been under EPA regulation and rules and monitoring for over 30 years. So, if we wanna pull the EPA maps, we can, we can take a look at what's out there.
Mr. Chair, I say we move forward with this, the voters have voted on this back in 2021.
All right, do I have a consensus to move forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, please move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next item. Discussion on Historic Preservation Easement, Tulich Field Road.
Just give me a moment, Mr. Chairman, to get resituated on this. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, moving up Mammoth Road to, to Witchfield, it's a property we're all familiar with, and since 2006, it's been encumbered by a Historic Preservation Easement. And that easement has provisions that restrict both what you can do with the property on the inside, and what you can do with the property on the outside. The easements run in favor of the Town of Londonderry, and there are a number of stakeholders identified in the document who have input or decision-making authority on various matters. And while the easement may lack clarity as far as exactly who decides which questions, it is clear that the town council is driving the bus on this easement, and has ultimate authority to act for the town. The, the purpose of this easement was historic preservation, and this, this parcel has not only the, the main structure, but also the historic barn on it, both are protected by this conservation easement. The property has gone through a different ownership, and is now owned by someone who did not, was not a party to creating the easement, but has, has owned the property for a number of years. And it should also be noted, Mr. Chairman, that when this parcel went into historic preservation, it also was placed in the, or at around that time, it was also placed in the Historic District. And so, the Historic District Commission has jurisdiction to issue or not issue a certificate of authority to do certain things with respect to this building. While the, the purpose of this easement was historic preservation, the current owner has approached the town and indicated that the, some of the provisions in the easement are fairly onerous, giving a different town boards and commissions authority with respect to changes that need to be made, either inside or outside of the, of the structure. The owner has also pointed out that there have been changes over the years, long before he acquired ownership, that have not exactly been in keeping with the historic features of the property. His obligation was to maintain the property at the same level of historic preservation, if you will, as when he acquired it. And after a recent inspection that was conducted by the Heritage Commission, it appears that he's, he's done just that, and in fact, he's put money into the property. However, he has approached the town indicating that the onerous restrictions that are currently encumbering the property are scaring off potential buyers and potential lessees. He has indicated that there have been numerous inquiries, and they all dry up after they... and they all dry up after they see the terms of this easement. There was a discussion at the Heritage Commission recently, at their most, most recent meeting, where the results of the inspection were gone over. Counselor Butler was, was kind enough to be present for the inspection as a representative of the town. And I certainly don't want to speak for Counselor Butler, but I, I think that, you know, it might be worth hearing from him, Mr. Chairman, at some point tonight, given his expertise in this area and what he observed. I, I credit what Mr. Flyer is saying about the terms of this easement perhaps being detracting from the commercial viability of the structure. It is my view that you can't have Historic Preservation, in this case, without commercial viability. That is, not unless the town is willing to take over this property and spend a lot of money to preserve it. And so what I told the Heritage Commission, and it was echoed by both members of the board and Mr. Flyer, was that there, there is likely a way to soften some of these restrictions in terms of the legal process that might be required. Additional work would need to be done. But the Town Council is in the driver's seat here. And I am really looking for the council's view on what should occur here. If the council is open to looking at the terms of this agreement to make sure that they are achieving the purpose that we all set out on, which was Historic Preservation, then we can do that. I suggest it should take place in close consultation with the Heritage Commission, perhaps the Historical Society, and Town Legal Council. If the consensus of the council is, no, we're not, we're not interested in doing that, that's fine too. But it really is, is the council's decision at this point. I would note that Mr. Flyer is here. I think he's, he's happy to answer any questions that the council might have. I believe I've summarized why this item is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I would just like to add some additional history. So in 2006, I was on the planning board. The owners of this property had a built-in swimming pool in the back, and they were a younger family, and they were trying to, they wanted to sell this home. They were trying to sell it for about $400,000. They weren't getting any buyers. So, working with someone else in town, they decided to see if they can get it rezoned. This was the epitome of spot zoning. It came to the planning board through a couple of different meetings. The planning board voted 7-0 not to recommend rezoning, and that it was a violation of our ordinances and it was spot zoning. It came to the Town Council, and over a period of a couple of meetings, one Town Councillor was the real estate agent for the, for the family that was trying to sell it. Another Town Councillor worked for the company that was trying to buy it, and they both stepped down. And it was approved for rezoning, again, over the objection of the public. Everybody wants you to listen to the public. They didn't listen to the public at that point, 2-1. It was then, a number of things were supposed to happen. One, the pool was supposed to get filled in, which Mr. Flyer did, which was never done under the previous owner. And a number of the specs that were laid out to be done were not done. I know that Mr. Flyer has, you know, has, has brought those up to what they're supposed to be now. The letters that I've, and actual emails and letters that I've received about this is, and actually recently from someone who does participate in the historic value of the community, the thing is, is like, no, you, you should uphold this for the historic value that it is. It never should have been rezoned anyway. Another one called into multiple questions about, around profitability. Well, here in the United States of America, where capital, you know, economy, I mean, people are, you know, are allowed to make money. I don't know that we should be helping them, but I do understand what Mr. Flyer is saying from the standpoint of that there's a number of covenants on this. The covenants put on it were through the Town Council meeting and through their attorneys, because it was highly controversial to be doing this at that time. It was very much strictly spot zoning, and the regulations were not followed. So that, that's how we got here. I, I know we're here now, but that's how we got here. As I recollect, I see Mr. Bouchard over here shaking his head up and down, and, and Mr. DeFrancisco, as they remember it the same way. So, for the rest of you, that's how we got here. So it's, as he said, it's, it's up to y'all what you want to do. I do know that Mr. Flyer has tried to bring in multiple different companies here. The latest one I remember was a bank. Our past Town Attorney just didn't see any legal remedy here at that time. I mean, so I don't know if there is or there is not one now, but our past Town Attorney did not really see a legal remedy. So with that, I'll be quiet. It's up to you all.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Just a couple. So is the gentleman, Mr. Flyer, trying to sell the property, correct?
I think that's one potential option. I think he's also talking to people who might lease the property from him.
Right. So right now, the town has it assessed at $342,100. But it's currently listed at $499,000. So the market is telling the current owner that the price is too high, is the way I look at it. So I think as a council, we shouldn't be making, we shouldn't be up here basically saying a private landowner, you know, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing that. A private, you know, the market's telling him it's too high, he needs to lower his price. So maybe if the price comes down to 400,000, someone would sell it and be with the restrictions. I, I just, I just don't think that we, as a government body, should be in the business of...
Ron, I'll take the diff with you on that.
Okay. I just, I just don't think we should be in the business...
The town will assess my home at one value, and it'll sell for a completely different value from what the town assesses it. What the town assessments are at are completely irrelevant for what someone can sell it at.
You may not have to say that next year, since you're in a real assessment.
I just don't think we should be in the business of deciding what the market believes.
So I guess the question really posed to us is, and I, and I take, I take, you know, that's a good point. I think what they're asking us is, is, I think that, I think we, as the leaders of the community, are now put in a position of that we could have a property that does have some historic value, in which, and I'm not a barn expert, but I would say the barn probably is in need of repair. If we continue to let this property sit as it is, it will do nothing but deteriorate. So do we, as a council, want to, you know, adjust the rules to enable someone to invest in the property and for it not to deteriorate? I think that's the question we're being asked. And I'm not saying that we should do it, but I think that's the question we're being asked.
Mr. Chair.
And we don't have to decide tonight.
I, I think it's too early in the process to make the decision. I mean, if, I mean, let the market decide. If he can't sell it at 400,000, or he can't sell it at something less than that, then maybe it is a government, you know, a government body issue. But I think right now, the market's saying it's too high. So that's my opinion.
Ted's waiting.
Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
So can I ask the Town Manager a quick question? So is this actually on the Registry of Deeds as a historic property with the state and the feds?
I, I can't speak for if it's on a register anywhere. But what I can tell you is, as a matter of a recording in the Registry of Deeds, there's a Historic Preservation restriction that's attached to it.
But it's not actually registered as a historic property?
I haven't seen anywhere that that's the case. Now, I could be proven wrong, but, but to the best of my knowledge, I am not aware of it being registered anywhere as a historic.
Okay, and as I read also this document...
And I, and I should, I should, there is a state database that has a, an inventory of historic properties, you know, that identifies potentially historic properties. I don't know if this property is on that database, but, but we can certainly find that out.
So as well, as I read this, this document is extremely limiting for anyone who owns it, whether it be for residential or for commercial purposes. And for anyone to be able to purchase this, it extremely limits you to be able to improve the property at all beyond what it's currently at and potentially collapsing as it is, to even keep it as a historical value. It's, there's an extreme limitation on this document. So, Ron, for anyone to, if you want to buy this, it would be a waste of their money, because you cannot even improve the property from what the limitations are, if you've read the document.
But keep in mind, Ted, the owner currently on the property bought it knowing these restrictions. So that's why I'm saying the market needs to decide what's going to happen here. I don't think we, as a government body, should be deciding that. When he, when the purchase, when the purchase was made, these restrictions were on the purchase, correct?
Yes.
That's how the property is purchased.
That's correct.
So knowing these restrictions are on the property, then you shouldn't have bought the property. Why are we, as a government body, deciding what the free market can do? That's all I'm saying to you.
I don't think, I, I think you're missing the point here. I met with Mr. Flyer and inspected the property. I can tell you, the barn, the roof was ready to cave in, the sills were rotted, and there were a couple of members that wouldn't even walk into the barn, because that's, that's the type of condition it was. They thought I was crazy to walk into it. So, you know, he, he's done some things to the barn to try to help it out. With regards to the house, he has put in money. He did take down the fencing. He did fill in the pools. If you take a look at the historical significance, all those windows are not the original windows. They were replaced, I think, with a vinyl, Richard, or aluminum siding windows. So, so that whole historic perspective is gone. I've gone into the cellar. Water runs through the cellar. There's rot in the cellar with the sills. So it's not a question of how much he can sell it. The real estate agent was with us, and we sat down with the real estate agent. He has had a law firm look, a dentist, I believe, look, and several other people look. But looking at the condition of the house and looking at the restrictions, they all ran. They, I'm not going to say they all ran, but they all declined, because they can't do anything with it. They, they can't do anything with it. So I think, and it's not a question of how much he wants to sell it for, I think that it's prudent for us to sit and see if we can change, I don't know if we can or not, the deed or the covenants, to see if we can make it a little easier. So when these people come in and look at the house, regardless of the price, that when they look at the, the covenants, they can work with it. Right now, I would, I wouldn't buy it. What are you, you'd be, what are you going to do with it? And, and I, I totally agree with you, Ron. You know, he did buy it, and the covenant was there. He's made the attempt. He has cleaned up the property. He's trying to sell it, and the sellers are going, "I'm not going to touch that because of the covenant." So I think that we should try to help by seeing if we can change the covenant to loosen it up, to stop scaring people from coming to buy it. Or you know what's going to happen? He can board it up and it'll rot.
So I, I don't...
That's, that's what's going to happen with property.
Do you know when the windows were installed?
That I don't know. I mean, I can, can I ask the, the landowner what the windows were installed?
Are we in the business of protecting somebody that bought something they shouldn't have purchased? Is my question, you know? Like, is that what we do? The free market should decide that, not us.
It, it has nothing to do with the price. It has to do with, with the covenants.
So if he couldn't, so...
I mean, someone's looking at that and saying, hey, he, he could try to sell it for 200,000, and they're going to look at it and say, "Oh my God, what can we do with it?"
I, I disagree with you. I've had somebody buy the property at 300,000. No.
You have someone who'll buy the property at 300,000?
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if, you have to let the market decide. All I'm saying is, you've got to give it a chance, let the process fall through.
He has been giving it a chance. He's had people take a look at it.
But it's listed at 500,000.
I, I'm sorry, I stepped out for a minute. I know Mr. Flyer is up here with the podium.
Why don't we listen to Mr. Flyer?
Well, I mean, you know, are you guys okay with listening to him?
So I have one comment before we go. It's Mr. Flyer.
Okay.
These windows, I believe, were put in by the prior owner of the property, and...
Do you recall that for a fact?
I'm trying to acquire when they were actually put in.
Please, all right.
I'm trying to acquire when that was put in. Do we know when those windows were put in? And at that point, as well, that would have voided this document, right? Do we know when those windows were put in by anyone?
So, are these supposed to be thermopane windows or something?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, how do the windows have any historical reference?
Somebody can probably go out there, look up the brand, and look up the, look up the model on, and then figure out when the windows were made, and we can figure that out. Okay, so, Mr. Flyer, I, I'm sorry, I stepped out to use the men's room. Did, did you want to say something?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
I, I wasn't going to, but I was listening to Mr. Dunn.
Yeah.
And I don't think you could be more incorrect in your assumptions.
Okay.
You didn't study it. Couple of the whole Historic Commission, or the, what is it called?
Heritage Commission.
Heritage Commission did. They sent two representatives over there. When we got involved with the property and took it over, it was pretty trashed. Completely trashed. We have, they came, and some people, even the chair of the, of your council came and took a look and took the pictures. We have a property that can't be leased to a quality tenant. Quality tenant, there's no insulation in the building. Half of the building inside, and I don't know if this works or not, okay.
That, that's better. Thank you.
Half of the building, yeah. Half of the building inside is, one floor, doesn't really have a floor. It's a, it's a bouncy vinyl thing. Another room is totally devoid of any historical, history or artifacts. Upstairs, half of the house has been, you know, there are newish bathrooms put in, I don't know when, but maybe 10, 10 years ago, 15, I don't know. But the rooms and the, what, and the floors, and what's been done there is not historical. That building, right now, would not be qualified by any, any official historical party. Now, I believe that this is, is an unusual property, and I think it's the town's problem as well as mine. And that's why I went to the commission, and, and that's why they got involved. I restored over a million square feet of historical property during my career. And we've, I think we've done a good job with another property here in town in terms of restoring it. In this case, if you, the quality companies can pay rent. If you put a company in that is marginal, they're going to turn over very quickly. So, a couple of years ago, I went and, before the, I forgot what the other committee, other board was.
Heritage.
Heritage, the appeals, where, where, where I went to...
The ZBA.
ZBA, to see if I could be, use it for residential, because that prohibited it at the moment. And I went through the whole process, and they voted yes. They gave, they voted to give a, a variance, not a variance, a, yeah.
If it was the ZBA, it would have been a variance.
A variance. So that existed. We just didn't follow through on that because the Democratic Party moved in. And they were available, and they needed it. So we, we let them lease it, and they leased it for the last five or six years, I guess. But when somebody comes to buy the property at any price, and I don't, you know, I don't talk about your money, but I guess in a case like this, you can say that I bought it, and it had that agreement, that agreement attached to it. But that agreement wasn't really put together in a business-like way. It was done in a way that made it so nothing could be done. If you've ever rehabbed a property to that degree, you need, you always find things wrong with, with an older property. You never know what you're going to find. But it usually is far more than you expected. In this case, we've been having so many things that we didn't expect, and they're right in front of our face. The building underneath the clabbards is wet and rotting. We painted it two times. And it's as if it just doesn't take. And we've taken boards off and seen the rotting there. So that building will not last unless somebody really does something with it. We could just board it up and put it into an inventory, and that wouldn't really help anybody. The town wouldn't be getting any taxes. And by the way, the tax amount that was there, that I'm being taxed for, was lowered. It was lowered to that. When the assessor went through the property with his assistant and took a look at the, what existed there as a building, and he, 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 he's dead now, so you can't get a hold of him, but...
But what you're telling me is proving my point.
No, I'm not...
Is because all I'm saying is, we need to let the market decide this first.
The market won't buy it. No. The market won't buy it, nobody will buy the property, you're not listening.
Have you tried? Put the property at 350,000 and see if it'll sell.
It's not a matter of that, that agreement doesn't look-
I'm just saying.
So, we probably don't want to have that.
That's fine, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's-
You're not, oh, I'm sorry. He's not correct.
I understand, he's engaging.
I apologize if I was mistaken.
I'll engage with, I'll engage with him, but I, I'm, I'm just a little bit, I just don't think you know what you're, you haven't done your homework, you really haven't.
Okay, well, Mr. Flyer, I, I respect what everybody's saying, everything, let's try not to do that.
Okay.
Um, let me ask the town manager a question if that's okay.
Yeah.
Has, um, has Ms. Carrier looked at this covenant?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Ramsdale retired. And we are working with, uh, on the land use pieces, we're working with attorney Megan Carrier. Um, what I'm, what I'm going to ask the council is, is that perhaps what we can do is have Ms. Carrier take a look at this agreement and see what her point of view is, and then see if she, see what she thinks.
Okay.
And she's, um, you know, she, perhaps she looks at it differently, I, I, I don't know. I, I'm only getting to know her, so, um, and see if she sees something that Mr. Ramsdale didn't see. Because Mr. Ramsdale saw what you saw, there was no other use for the property.
Right, but I would just want you to understand, and the gentleman, you know, the other, uh, Mr. Dunn, um, that if you don't have a quality tenant, you'll get a low rent, that's great. Um, right now, the building costs, since you're, you're interested in the dollars, the building costs about 4,000 a month at this point to maintain and, but there's a lot that has to be done to it. Um, we're at a point where when we took out the pool, we didn't bury it, we took it out, it was a very expensive process. And it had to be taken out, not buried, uh, in that case. Um, insurance companies would not insure the building unless it was taken out. And it was a real danger to the kids in the neighborhood. It wasn't safe, it wasn't ever fully protected properly. Uh, it was just waiting for somebody to drown in it. And I, I, the insurance company wouldn't take that liability, nor would I. Um, secondly, in terms of what has to be done by a tenant, they've got to be able to go in and insulate the walls, um, do things with the heating and air conditioning to make it a modern space that somebody would rent. Uh, the, they were, the companies that looked at it were more than interested in renting it. Uh, and several have been interested and wanted to put it, have it for a price. But when their attorneys looked at that agreement, they wouldn't let their, wouldn't let anybody touch it.
So Mr. Sheriff, I think I heard you correctly. You directed the town manager to have, to look at the, uh, the easement or the abate.
Uh-uh. So, you know, I think the request coming before the council is, is that will you consider relooking at the covenants of the property? What I'm, what I'm suggesting to the council is, is that before we reconsider looking at the covenants of it, we ask, um, Ms. Carrier, who, who's our new land use attorney, for her point of view on it. Um, we, we can look all we want, but if, if Ms. Carrier says that, okay, well, laws have changed and you can do X, Y, and Z. Ms. Carrier may turn around and she may say, no, there's really just nothing you can do with this. You know, based on the history and everything else, this is all you can do, this is the best you're going to get. Then the question that becomes before the council is, is how important is it to the council that the historic value, of which there appears to be very little, but the surface, the visual historic value to the community, what is that worth? And then the council has to make a decision on whether or not that has a certain amount of value and then work with the landowner to make sure that we continue to have that value here in the community. Or, you know, it will stay the way it is. I mean, I, I, I don't know where else to go with it, those are the options that I can think of at the moment.
I wanted to bring one more thing to your mind.
I, I would agree with you. I mean, I think there's just a lot of information that we don't have right now at this time. And I think if we're to make a decision other than seek counsel, I think that it would probably be inappropriate for us to move forward in that regards.
So with regards to this property, Mr. Flyer, what I think we would have to do is, the process, if we were to do anything and move profit, we would have to go through a public hearing process. We'd have to look at whether it's rezoning or whether we're, or whether we're, you know, redoing the covenant. I, I don't know exactly what the process is, but it's going to need to be something that comes out and we get input on. Depending on what Ms. Carrier says to us.
Okay, I just want you all to know that the historic group voted, everyone voted, uh, to try to revise it. They did their homework, they, they, they listened to the issues. I invited them to work with us. I think it's a town treasure, um, in terms of visibility, I agree with that. However, um, the town doesn't want to pay any money to renovate it or keep it that way. But if, but with the way that agreement is written, um, the town controls the destiny, not me. Uh, whether that can be changed or not, I don't know, but if it can be, the town controls that. And if that pool had remained as it was, was there, with that agreement, and I'm talking in front of an attorney, but I, I do believe the town would have been liable if somebody drowned in it just as much as I, I and my partners would be.
Well, you know, great minds will create and disagree, but, um-
Well, I could tell you now, that's why we boarded up the barn.
The good news is the pool's not there.
Yeah, but the barn and the house are-
Well, I think I'm asking the council for a commitment to seek legal counsel to find out, you know, what we, what we can and we can't, we cannot do. And I really think that's probably the best the council can offer at this point, is to take it under consideration and to look at it and, and come back to you. I, I do want to remind you, and I know that you're aware of this, that, you know, there is the Mack family home property that was offered to the town to buy. Um, after an inspection and the amount of work that would have to be done with it, they, you know, the town took a pass. Um, so we do value these homes here in the community and everything and will endeavor to try to figure out whether there's a solution or not. But I don't want you to think we're making any promises. What I, what I will say is, is we'll ask for help.
Okay, well, there's an-
Is that okay?
There's an issue of timing. We've lost for four months the ability to rent it.
Okay.
The ability to sell it at any price. And we've, we've listened to everybody, but, um, I want to, I guarantee you that any attorney that's read that agreement has not let their client near the property after it was written.
Do we think we can get this on, um, Ms. Carrier's calendar this, this week and have her take a look at it?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, we're meeting with her tomorrow, actually.
See, the timing's great.
Timing's everything.
You know, I just don't want to board it up.
So they're meeting with her tomorrow, so I guess we'll, we'll add that to the agenda.
That's, that's exciting, good to hear. But if you can come up with some solutions, um, did you forget about Max? That's a palace compared to the condition of this house. And you could live in Max right, right away.
As you're well aware, I've been inside Tewittsfield, so I understand.
You, well, and you came out safe, but, um, we're concerned and it needs everything. So you could spend a million dollars on that property and finally, finally it would look, it would be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Flyer. Uh, seeing the whole business, I'll, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2023 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hold as a favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Liaison reports, anything new on the whole liaison front, anything?
I've got a couple things for you, John. Yeah, uh, Budget Committee had a meeting on May 25th. Lisa McKinney, uh, spoke at the meeting, it went very well, we have some new Budget Committee members, so it was very beneficial to them. They spoke, uh, very highly in favor of her attending and she went over the budget book and how the budget works and all that, they appreciated that. Um, tomorrow night, uh, Utility Committee's meeting and Amy Russo is going to be here with her team, um, presenting and taking questions. So if anybody has any questions, please feel free to come to the meeting, um, and bring any questions you have regarding water.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Planning Board is Wednesday night, I think we have seven or eight items that we're going over, so it'll be a lengthy one, I think.
It'll be a long night. Um, Old Home Day is into full swing, I'm in touch with Ms. Sullivan. Katie, as usual, is running a very spirited, um, you know, um, event and, uh, and I'm told it's going to be, uh, going to exceed last year's event. So I'm looking forward to, um, uh, continuing to work with Ms. Sullivan. Um, anything else? Town manager.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a couple of items tonight, um, that I wanted to put on the council's radar. Uh, the first is a grant for state revolving fund money that we submitted, um, late last week. And the project name for this grant is Lenndery Water System Expansion for PFAS-Impacted Private Water Supplies. Um, this is, uh, another item actually that, um, arises from feedback and, uh, participation that we've received from members of the community, um, over the last several years. Vigorous, um, advocacy for this, and so the community, um, uh, will get a lot of credit for this if, um, uh, ultimately we get this money and we're able to do this project. Um, the description of this project is, uh, the proposed project is needed to furnish, furnish potable water to residents whose wells have been contaminated with PFAS above regulatory limits. A study was completed in July 2022 for New Hampshire DES on behalf of the town to identify all private wells in towns that had PFAS concentrations above the regulatory limit. A conceptual plan was developed that identified how the existing public water system could be expanded to serve impacted properties. The results of the study found that an estimated maximum day demand of 844,000 gallons per day would be added to the Lenndery Water System as a result of extending water main, uh, the water main to serve PFAS-impacted properties. In order to submit, uh, to transmit water supply to meet the additional 844 gallon per day demand, Weston and Sampson, our consultant, uh, identified the need to install a 16-inch diameter water main down High Range Road, there's been some discussion with the council about this before, um, from the terminus of the existing 16-inch water main located near the intersection of High Range Road and Alexander Road to the intersection of High Range Road and Parmenter Road. The need for a 16-inch pipe in this, uh, area was identified through hydraulic modeling efforts for a full water system buildup. A project is currently being designed by Penachuk East Utilities in concert with St. Cobain to extend, uh, the existing Lenndery Water System from the intersection of High Range Road and Alexander to the intersection of High Range Road and Royal Lane, a distance of approximately 5,500 linear feet in order to supply potable water to residents whose wells have been contaminated with PFAS above regulatory limits. That's within the consent decree area that St. Cobain is doing that work. The project area is within the limits of High Range Road, um, and it proposes an 8-inch diameter pipe. That's for St. Cobain to do what it needs to do under the consent decree. Um, in close consultation with the commissioner and the department, um, Lenndery has decided to put in for this SRF money, um, to upsize that pipe from 8 inches to 16 inches, um, so that we can, uh, follow, uh, what the commissioner refers to as a no regrets policy. That is, um, when the time comes for us to build out this public water system, um, we're not going to have to dig up High Range Road to replace the 8-inch pipe, uh, with a 16-inch pipe. Um, this also poises us to potentially branch out to the east. Um, this is not part of this project, but, but that is one of the goals, um, to serve those heavily contaminated neighborhoods, um, that are not within the consent decree area, uh, but just across the street. Um, again, that is a, a longer-term goal, uh, but without this work, it's not something that would be possible, um, without going back and digging up High Range Road. In this, uh, request, we're asking for, um, a loan funding of $2 million. That's a 20-year, uh, loan term through the SRF program. SRF, uh, is typically loaned with a significant portion of, uh, forgiveness. Um, and we are also pursuing a, um, uh, trust fund grant, um, asking for the same, um, project. Uh, and those, uh, applications we made later this year. So, uh, we're not committed to doing anything here, um, this ultimately, uh, is yet to be awarded. Um, and it is one part of the funding puzzle. Um, but we did have a June deadline that we needed to meet to be eligible for SRF, uh, funding, um, this year. And I'm happy to report that we got our application in, um, and the state has signaled that this is something that we should, we should be pursuing. Um, so that is the report there.
I can add too that I've had a number of conversations now with the DES people, also with Jeff Martz, who's been promoted, and with Andrew Fuller, his replacement. In addition to that, um, a number of residents have contacted me directly with regards to their water sampling. Water sampling is going to be happening again in the consent decree area here in the next several weeks. From what I've been told, it will be completed by the, um, end of the summer. Um, in addition to that, over 300 letters went out and within the consent decree area for point of entry systems. Um, and that they're going to be, um, they have gone out already and what the letter says is that you'll be contacted in the next 45 days, uh, by the vendor to be able to talk about a possible, uh, point of use system that will have to be maintained by St. Cobain and, and others going forward. So there, it's been, it's been almost 10 years since we've been having this conversation and it's, um, it's, it's taken way too long and we're continuing to go forward. Yes, sir.
You said point of entry and then you said point of use, is that coming into the house or is that like that?
My, my, my mistake, my, um, so it's, it's the point of entry of the water coming into the house from the well, not a point of use system at your faucet. Thank you for correcting me. Um, I'm sorry, did you have something else?
Uh, just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, it's already been alluded to tonight. Um, uh, Lenndery was on the front page of the Union Leader, uh, in the Friday/Saturday edition, talking about the village on Technology Hill. Um, and, uh, it's an article that, uh, looks at these mixed-use developments. This is something that's, uh, been discussed, um, conceptually. Um, I believe with the planning board, uh, we have a conceptual application that is pending. Um, but what I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, what I told, uh, the Union Leader and what the developer told the Union Leader is something that I, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of. And that is, uh, that housing is inextricably linked with economic development. And here we have a proposal, uh, from a developer who has a user who is concerned enough about, um, a lack of, uh, housing for its skilled workforce that the developer is integrating housing directly into the development. These are difficult issues, housing, uh, has, uh, you know, uh, reasonable people disagreeing on both sides of it. Uh, but I'm here to tell you tonight that this is, uh, not going to go away as an issue, uh, that I expect we're going to continue to need to discuss and look at as a town.
Okay. Kelly, anything from you tonight?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Last item for this evening. Um, these things of these point of orders come up and the author of an email that they sent out today, you know, said that we improperly deny points of orders and that I have to hear them as the chairperson before denying it. You know, this person who sends these things out fashions themselves as the expert. Point of order occurs when someone draws attention to a rules violation in a meeting. The point of order must be accepted in order for the chair to rule on it. The chair doesn't have to accept a point of order. There has to be a rules violation. If the chair determines there is no rules violation, then there is no point of order. Those are the rules in which we follow, that's what we follow here. More explicitly, if someone in the council wants to make a point of order, that's different. We're part of the assembly, we're part of the legislative body. Just because it's a public meeting doesn't mean you get to disrupt it and say there's a point of order and you want to be heard. That's not the way these things work, right? You have to have a rules violation. And these emails that go out telling people to come here and say, you know, go down there, we're going to hold you accountable, you only work for us. We work for 26,000 people. We don't just work for some member of some party. Right? This whole party thing, there's 26,000 people in this town. And you know what? It's pretty much evenly split, Republican, Democrat, and Independent. We work for all of them. This is a great place. And a few people, you know, want to make it different. You know what? It's a pretty good place. And as Bill Hart said, just try to figure out how not to mess it up. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Hold as a favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Our next meeting is going to be June 26th, 2023. Um, we put it out there because on, the next meeting would have been June 19th, but I couldn't get clarification on whether or not that would be a holiday or not, you know, here in the state of New Hampshire. So we put it out to the 26th of June. So thank you very much and good night.